Good evening and welcome to the December 20th, 2023 Lower Mcfield Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Just a reminder that public comment on agenda items will be taken as each item is discussed. And with that, I call this meeting to order and ask that if you're able, you join with us, sorry, rise and join with us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America. And through their authority, we would just stand one nation.
Thank you. Okay, John, are you here?
Yes.
James?
Present.
Dan?
Here.
Colin?
Present.
I am here, so we have a full board. And with that, we are on to Agenda Item Number Four, Community Announcements. This is the portion of the agenda where residents or youths can either call in or ask for a special agenda item to be placed on this agenda. And with that, we'll just remind everyone that Club Cub Scout PAC 95 is once again collecting broken Christmas lights to be recycled in partnership with the Big Oak Sitco on Big Oak Road. And they will be there till January 10th. If you have any questions, please contact Joni Layden at joniSL20@gmail.com. Ooh, and a popular event, the Environmental Advisory Council will be hosting their Styrofoam and Recycling Event on Saturday, January 20th, 2024. Don't believe the typo, we're not going back in time. From 10 to noon, right outside the township building here. They are also collecting wine corks and cleaned medication bottles. Please, 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 if you're able to donate medication bottles, all identification information has to be scrubbed off the bottle. And Kevin, I'm going to say you're doing the batteries, even if I don't know that you are. We can recycle batteries for you as well. And with that, Agenda Item, actually, anybody else have anything else they want to add? Anybody in the audience? Okay, then we're on to Agenda Item Number Five, Treasurers Report.
Madam Chair, I move that we consider approval of the 2023 inter-fund transfers.
Second?
Thank you. Treasurer has changed his voice.
Oh, sorry.
In the amount of one, do we need to redo this?
No.
Okay, in the amount of $1,137,869.32.
Motion made by John.
I was just excited, you know.
Seconded by Dan. Okay, any comment from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. James?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the warrants list for November 20th, 2023, December 4th, 2023, and December 18th, 2023, in the amount of
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. And then Agenda Item Number Six, Consider Approval of Minutes from December 6th, 2023 Meeting. Your motion.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Number Seven, we have representatives from the land study here to give their presentation. Come on up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever's easier for you.
Anyhow.
That's enough for everybody up there.
That's.
Do you need more?
Yeah, we have enough yet.
Yeah.
Do we have extras?
Yeah.
We again, that was.
There's one, please.
Oh, no.
It's all right.
Multitasking.
Yes.
Yep.
They were planning to hand.
Should be good.
It's. You know I'm probably.
These are maps, then?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll let you get it.
Yeah.
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 Are you guys ready?
Yep.
Okay, then if you please introduce yourself and begin your presentation, that would be wonderful.
My name's Ward Oberholzer. I'm.
I'm not sure if you're already getting hand signals that your mic should be a little bit closer to you. And you, sir in the blue shirt, should bring that mic closer to you. Make sure they're on. Thank you.
My name is Ward Oberholzer. I'm a senior engineer with land studies. I specialize in water resources and flooding. I have Ben Klemmer with me. He's an engineer. He was a bit in attendance when we were doing some of the testing. We're here to discuss the findings and recommendations of our, in essence, it was a visual flood mitigation assessment of existing conditions, taking a look at historical aspects, changes to the land use and the streams, and then coming up with some general recommendations. All right. Okay, this first map is actually showing existing conditions of some of the flood locations and the flows. And in general, we have things that are kind of broken out into larger picture. But some of the major significant areas of the flooding, we're on lower Hilltop and down closer to Taylorsville Road. You can kind of follow where the flow paths go. And then we identified different basins and different descriptions of some of the flooding areas. The, one of the major, I'm going to say constrictions or flooding areas is down there in the confluence of the tributary with Taylorsville and Highland Drive. And there's also a residential crossing down there. When Taylorsville overtops, a lot of the flooding and the flows go into the Maplevale Development. And there's some issues with some of the storm drains that we try to resolve. The next photo is just photos showing it's a highlight of the pinch point areas down close to Maplevale. The photo to the right is actually the private bridge. That crossing actually gets clogged with a lot of debris. We end up with floodwaters overtopping through the properties and on the Taylorsville Road. You can see the straight channel looking up. And once Taylorsville Road overtops, it has no way to get back into the channel again and flows into the Maplevale Development, which is pretty much the sump in the area. Couple of the other crossings, you'll look at, again, the bottom photo to the right is the Taylorsville Crossing. We're looking upstream, you can barely see the opening. We have large trees and vegetation that kind of block the opening. And then you can, the Highland Drive culvert, we're looking downstream. Taylorsville Road is very close to the floodplain elevation, indicating that it will flood frequently. If you notice the map to the left, once the stream crosses through Taylorsville Road, it stays away from the residential development. And a lot of the work down there that could be proposed really would not benefit any of the Maplevale or any of the residences from the flooding issues. We did do some historical mapping comparisons, just to see what kind of, I'm going to say, impacts have been done to the floodplain and the channel over the years. The blue line came from historical mapping from 1876. And then when you, 1972, there's the yellow line. You can see some of the major changes that occurred with the stream and the floodplain down at Taylorsville Road in Maplevale. The stream channel was pretty much diverted and straightened. Typically, that ends up causing a lot of bed degradation, which in turn then transitions into a lot of bedload bar development and can, I'm going to say, increased flooding potential. But in that area, there's no residences down there. However, if you go looking through up above Taylorsville, you'll see significant changes in straightening in the stream. Well, that produces an awful lot of bedload and debris, which in essence is what can get clogged on some of the crossings and the culverts, the bridges, and increased flooding of the roadways. This is a blow up of Lower Hilltop. The primary things you're going to see here is the yellow line in 72 and the red line in 2022. It was pretty much, they were straightened. It used to have an awful lot of meandering. Right now, it's right against the residential properties on the Lower Hilltop Road. And when the stream overtops, it flows through their backyards and then back down into the channel. On Taylorsville Road, there was significant manipulation of the streams and the floodplain. More of the straightening, which increases the bedload and creates a lot of the flooding around the Hilltop or the Highland Drive area and Taylorsville. Not so much of an impact downstream with Taylorsville, except that just goes to show how much impact has occurred to the streams and the floodplains over time. So this is a large map of the recommendations. And we'll start from the Hillwood Heights area. There's a couple tributaries up there above 295, and there's a stormwater basin in there. These were minor recommendations that would help, I'm going to say, increase some of the flood storage and slow some of the floodwaters down. The channels through there are kind of incised, or we would call entrenched, where it just pushes the flow through very quickly. Doing a restoration type project would actually spread the flows out, slow the velocity down, and increase some storage. When we go into just east of Mcfield Chase, you'll see Basin B. There's a stormwater management facility there, an older one, that pinches the stream between the residence and the stormwater basin. And that forces a lot of the flow into the residential backyards before it reenters the stream in that red hatched area. The recommendation there would be to actually modify that old stormwater basin, get the stream away from the residential properties, and get it more a straight, direct route through Hilltop, Lower Hilltop, and Emerson Drive. Then you'll notice that down at the bottom, when it goes through the residences, there's red hatching through there. The banks through there are extremely high, the top of banks, such that they might actually be higher than the upstream roadway, which may cause a lot of the flooding at those two crossings. The intent would be, at some point in time, to do a two-dimensional hydrodynamic model to see if those banks need to be lowered prior to, or other improvements being made to reduce the flooding on the roadway. As you work your way down into Maplevale, that's very complex. We have the residential crossing, which causes flooding. We have a Highland Drive, which is, the way the road comes into Taylorsville, it is very high. I don't necessarily know how much of the opening per se would increase or decrease the flooding, because that road is so much higher than Taylorsville. And then we have the Taylorsville Crossing, which had been moved, I'm going to say, quite a while into closer to the interchange. What happens when Taylorsville Road floods? You have flow going through the Maplevale Development. Our recommendation would be to try to provide better inlets and better storm drain system to take the flow to Basin C, which would be property to the north of Maplevale, and also Basin B, which is property south of Maplevale. In detail, on Basin A, what we did was just show green as doing restoration to try to slow the water down, and then maybe possibly make some retrofits to Basin A. However, I would say these modifications are relatively minor compared to some of the other recommendations. However, I would say these modifications are relatively minor compared to some of the other recommendations. The next page, Basin B, is the one that, you can see how it encroaches upon the stream, the gray stream to the right, which pretty much just causes any overtopping to go through the residential areas within that development. The idea would be to modify Basin B to relocate the stream away from the residences and get a straighter approach leading into Lower Hilltop Road. The next slide is an example of, of, I'm going to say, a restoration technique, valley and floodplain restoration. The dashed line in the existing channel shows high banks. And in essence, that increases the water surface during flood events. What we typically tend to try to do is to remove those high banks to get them very shallow. It provides much lower velocities, and it actually lowers the water surface elevation in many locations. Then it can be planted with either woodies or shrubs or herbaceous material. With these, Poorhouse Run was a site in York, PA. Before 2018, you can kind of see the conditions. High eroding banks, failing trees. Notice the gravel and the cobble. During a large storm event, that tends to build up with debris, and you end up having to dredge it after large flooding events. However, dredging afterwards doesn't usually prevent it from occurring again during the next flood event. And this is a type of a restoration that was done in somewhat of an urban area. And five years later, it's fully vegetated with hardly any eroding banks. And there's not a lot of bar material, so there's not a lot of movement of bedload or debris. The next one is Culp's Run. This was a more recent one. This was done in Gettysburg National Historical Park. You can kind of see the high eroding banks, 2020. It doesn't take long, once we get the hydrology and the water set for the vegetation to get established. The 2022, you can see the vegetation. That's when construction was just finished. It was about 3,000 feet. We added about five acres of wetlands and 13 acres of meadow land. By 2023, one year later after construction, you can kind of see the vegetation, how the idea is to keep those soil-water interface apart and put the water on the vegetation, and then you don't have any movement of bed material, no eroding trees, et cetera. Some of the areas don't have room for a restoration project like that. So we just kind of threw in some photos, which would be through Lower Hill Slope and Edgemere. That would have to be armored, maybe possibly widened. What we would try to do is maximize the capacity going through there, including the 90-degree bend immediately downstream of Edgemere. Those banks are high. I believe that backwater is actually what is causing the flooding on Edgemere and possibly impacting Lower Hill Slope. So we get to the complicated crossing again at Taylorsville Road. You have the town of Mapleville, Maplevale, where the sump is immediately adjacent to the canal. What we're proposing is to put two basins, one on the north end, one on the south end, and to get the flows that, I'm going to say, flood onto Taylorsville Road away from Mapleville flowing north and south. This does not per se negate that we're not trying to improve the crossings, because the, what they're, we're recommending a two-dimensional model that will try to show what existing conditions are causing, including blocking some of the culverts or the bridges with debris, but then getting a better handle on a cost-benefit of analysis, what crossing and what improvements can be done to try to reduce the flooding of Taylorsville. However, Taylorsville is extremely low profile relative to the stream. So I anticipate Taylorsville still being flooded. This is a means of trying to get the flow away from the sump in Maplevale and into those basins to the left. We did do some preliminary testing. Pretty much it was backhoe digging some pits. I had a feeling that we would end up finding, I'm going to say, very sandy loam or coarse sand and gravel in those pits at some elevation. We went about seven feet down and found a good layer of sand and gravel. We don't know how deep it is. But it was infiltrating so fast that we really couldn't test with the infiltration rate. What went in pretty much was just siphoning down. So we believe that the north and south areas would be good to try to send the water to and reduce the flow going into the canal, which may then possibly provide an opportunity to put an additional outfall or two from Maplevale into the canal. This, in essence, this is just a blow up of trying to get inlets along Maplevale and Taylorsville to flow into Basin C. The basin would have to be deep, seven, eight, nine feet. An analysis would actually tell how deep it is. But there's an awful lot of drop that needs to occur to get into the stream close to the canal. And we would discharge anything that goes into Basin C. If there's anything that's not infiltrating, it would then be directed towards the canal and turn the stream close to that confluence. They're just, the existing private bridges is the first photo. That has a very, I'm going to say, short span. It's prone for clogging, especially with the unstable stream system upstream. Our recommendation for that would be to actually replace that bridge, relocate it, relocate the stream, and get a better alignment that can pass additional stuff. And at the same time, upstream, a restoration project could put a storage zone in for any type of debris to gather before it gets into this bridge. And the last slide is a thank you and just kind of photos of the existing conditions.
Thank you. Notice the engineer is very quiet. I'm going to open it up to the supervisors. I can't imagine that anyone over here has questions over here. Dan, you want to go?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, thank you for joining us this evening and for your study. Not a whole lot of surprises, I don't think. So I just, I have some questions about a couple of things that you mentioned, as well as you might have zigged when, I'm curious why you didn't zag kind of thing, in terms of recommendations. So I'll ask you a few of those. First question I had, more high level. Did you come across any FEMA flood studies for this watershed ever completed?
No, I believe we did a search, and I don't think the watershed was too small.
There's, there's no, the only floodway or flood we would have here relative to regulatory issue would be DEPs assume 50-foot floodway, because FEMA's never known. Okay. The 1972 aerials you referenced show a stream relocation. Did you dig into, no pun intended, why, how that was, why and how that was relocated? Was that, my assumption has always been it was PennDOT when they were building 95, so I'm curious.
Yeah, in the Taylorsville Road area, yes, that would have been the case. That was, yeah, as a result of the intersection construction.
Now, you made mention of, obviously, Taylorsville is very low relative to Highland and other areas. When you're recommending the couple of basins, well, any of the basin retrofits or upgrades or new basins, did you calculate what size storm event for that watershed or that larger drainage area that could, that would treat?
No, our scope was primary to do a visual assessment and come up with some general recommendations. But my, my thought for those basins would be not necessarily having a stormwater frequency flow type thing. Because of the gravel and the distance that we would have to get from the basins to the canal, that it may possibly be a wide, shallow floodplain in that sand and gravel. And then when we get closer to the confluence of the tributary and the canal, then maybe put a pocket in there that might be two or three feet deep. So my fear would be if the basin filled up, then it would backwater on Taylorsville again. But there's enough drop between Taylorsville and the canal that we could do that down closer to the bottom, but take advantage of the gravel from the top all the way through.
Rather than calling it a basin, like, we all think of basins as stormwater basins, because that's what we deal with every day, right?
Yes.
More of a flood storage basin or flood.
Yeah, an infiltration, flood storage. In essence, the, the ideal situation would be to try to get as much flow going north and south of Mapleville. And based upon the infiltration and the material that we saw, I don't think a lot of the flow going in there is going to be coming out. It's just going to be going straight down. It would be good to actually do some probes through those areas to see how deep it was. I would like, it would be nice to know if it was actually deeper than the canal. And in that respect, then you would know that it's not even going into the canal.
Yeah, because you, it doesn't look like you hit groundwater then, if you're.
There wasn't any sign of, it was pretty dry.
It was very deep.
And Ben was at the testing.
Okay. And you attempted to do infiltration tests, but like, the double ring infiltrometer, what were you?
It siphoned down through the cone before we could even measure.
Okay. That's promising for.
It was, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so when we look at just other, when I talk about zig versus zagging, when I look at the larger map, whatever sheet that was, just for reference points. You have, there it is. I think you have sheet numbers on here for reference, but.
I believe that's 11.
Is there 11 on there?
No, I had them in mind.
Oh, you numbered them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for folks wondering, I'm looking at the recommendations sheet, just for reference, where it has all the neighborhoods listed and recommendations. Starting at the top of the watershed, we go to where it's labeled Longshore Estates. There, you know, that, Longshore Estates along Merrick Road, some of those homes flooded during that, that one storm.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Ben, would you mind, do you serve your share with the presentation?
Yes, if you're honest.
If we could bring that up. Thank you.
All right, so where it says Longshore Estates there, for those looking on the screen, sort of your top left corner, that's the neighborhood along Merrick Road flooded during that July 15th rain event. Because there was large flows coming through that farmland preservation land, there are some inlets along the back of those homes, along the back of those lots. I'm wondering, did you consider any potential improvements or activities in that area?
No, I were not actually, I was not actually aware of those homes that had flooded there. I knew that they had a lot of flow that came across the road from the field, but I was not aware of that homes.
So if, again, if you're looking at the map, there's a road labeled Fairfield Road. I'm just, it kind of splits like a fork, like a tuning fork, into Dolington. Directly across from there, there's one lot. And to the southern edge of that lot, there was a large amount of flow. I've seen videos of it, so that's why.
Okay.
Large amount of flow flowing to the south of that lot, to the back of those properties along Merrick Road, eventually to the basin, but all their backyards got flooded. So I'm curious if there are things we could do there. Mostly because, you know, it's high up in the watershed, trying to keep that, that snowball from turning into a avalanche, right? As it goes down the mountain. Trying, I'm just looking at things we could do at the top part of the water, so that might have an impact as well.
It would be, it's typically extremely difficult trying to use a basin to prevent flooding, only because the volume of water relative to the volume in the basin, it doesn't take long before the basins fill and the peaks fill over top and head out. With that area in there, it may possibly be, you do have two, two stormwater management basins in that area. You could possibly try to collect those, the flow coming off the fields with a large swale and yard, and a couple like large yard inlets, and direct them into those basins to bypass the residents. Trying to put a basin up there in addition to the other ones, typically it would have to be so large that, to manage floods like that, it's usually not going to work.
And quite honestly, that was a very large storm event. So this is also for smaller storm events. We know in certain storm events, we can do as much as we can before we can't. But for the, for the less frequent ones where we can still have a positive impact, if there are any BMPs we could use up there, that'd be of interest.
So they do flood during smaller events also then? Yes.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I would have to look at that in more detail. But typically, the best way to try to avoid that is to capture and convey.
Related, related to that, so let's see. So the other one that's nearby, the township owns the Snipes Track, which is 30 some odd acres, very, very close by. I'm curious if you looked at that area as a potential area for storage of any type. It's not, it's.
Is that between Hillwood Heights and Longshore Estate?
It's just south of what you have labeled as Farmview, which is south of 295. It's that.
It's the green area behind your key.
Oh, this area. It's behind the.
Okay. Well, no, because it actually seemed as though it was out of the drainage area.
So, I'm wondering, is there, could it be, could you convey there somehow by a series of pipes or other methods?
I don't know. Yeah.
Again, it just, it looks, it looked like an opportunity higher up in the watershed.
Yes.
Not everything has to be done at the bottom. That's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Again, zig versus zagging, that's why I'm asking, that's what we do.
Yeah.
And then, I know, I know, I think I'm clear on what you're talking about relative, but I'll ask anyway. Basin B, when you're, is the recommendation for the stream as it runs from, flows from north to south to relocate or realign this, I should say, realign the stream? So it's not such a 90-degree at the discharge point, the outfall discharge of that basin right behind those homes?
Yes, the, what happens now is that basin extends past the backyards of the residences, and the stream has to fit between the basin embankment and the residences. So when the stream floods, it goes through the residences. The recommendation would be to actually shorten that basin and relocate the stream away from the residences and make it have a much lower, a wider floodplain, so that stays within that valley instead of flooding the yards.
In order for us to do that, we'd have to make sure that the shortened basin still has, can still meet the, provides the benefit that it's supposed to, right? The volume, capacity, flows and treatment.
Yes, and we, actually, when I showed the typical valley or floodplain restoration project, that does provide an awful lot of storage when you do a long distance, because if you're moving 20,000 cubic yards of soil, you now have 20,000 cubic yards of space available for floods. But there would be a detailed analysis to make sure we weren't making conditions worse.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that was put in as part of a residential development that had to meet certain requirements for. Qualities.
Yep.
It's an old basin, but they did the old way of.
Yep.
Okay, uh, going down that same. Same concept, so I noticed um as we go further east in the kind of going down, keep going downstream. Where we have the the channel armoring or bank armoring. We have a couple that look like back to back ninety degree bends.
Mm hmm.
That looks, I don't have it in front of me, but that looks like that's the latest, that matches the red line from twenty twenty-two ish. That's why we have the back to back ninety degrees.
Correct, yeah, that's the most accurate delineation.
So it would it be recommended that we try and also realign the stream in that location at all? Or is that what's going on there that we wouldn't recommend that?
The um, my belief is that uh um with the development, it's either through channel incision. The channel has dropped significantly over that time period, or there was a significant amount of fill placed um much earlier. And the banks are so high that it would be extremely difficult to try to realign the stream with the residences next door. What, on the downstream side of the first ninety degree bend as it's coming out of the development. I believe the best approach would be, besides armoring the straight approach, would be to lower that high bank because it's. Eight, ten feet high and get the flow to go to drop down at a much lower elevation, which would then provide a lot less backwater. To the upstream roads and the residences.
Continuing downstream, we have the large nineteen plus acre parcel, I think. From your color codes, is that's, are you, is that where you, are you recommending the flood floodplain and valley restoration there?
Yes, through through there and also the Duck Pond property, if feasible. That would significantly reduce the bed load and debris, woody debris that works its way down into Taylorsville. And it would um again, slow a lot of the velocity um and provide some storage for flood flows within that long reach.
Of course, that's a private residence, private property, so we would have to.
Yes, and we did have a walk with them and they did seem interested. Let's just say they weren't against what we were discussing.
So the door may be open. All right, continuing downstream, there are a couple of basins, existing basins that come off of the Prospect Farm Drive, which I guess would treat. Uh, Prospect Manor, do you see that label? Are there any, we, the township owns some land back there. Is there, did you look at potentially providing additional storage area there?
They actually seem too high. It it might be possible to do something there, but um I believe it would be very extensive. And there's not a lot of room in there between the stream, the floodplain and the stormwater basins. So I can't imagine trying to get, make them smaller and and make, yeah. It would be difficult to try to work with those basins.
And then continuing down a little bit where you have the new culvert crossing. Is that where the driveway, where is that exactly? I know that property, is that where the driveway crosses?
Yeah, there's, there's a driveway crossing, which is, I'm going to say maybe two hundred, two hundred fifty feet upstream of um hillside. And then you have the Taylorsville crossing downstream of that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, I knew exactly where you were, where you were talking about, because on the on the map, it's a little bit off from where I have it in my head. And then.
Or Highland, rather.
Yeah, I know Highland Drive very well. I know what you're talking about. I live on that street, that's why, kidding. And then at Highland, speaking of Highland, um, you know, we're, we're, you're probably aware that we're looking at changing out the culvert there and doing some improvements on Highland Drive relative to more inlets. And trying to get flow into the stream. Have you worked that into your recommendations or are you just considering that something separate completely? I'm just wondering why.
What our approach would be for that, um, I'm going to say. Number of crossings from Taylorsville to Highland um would be to actually do a two D model. With, I'm going to say a replacement structure there, what I actually think may need to be required is to put a wall, a higher wall along the hills, along the right side, the Taylorsville Road. Side to try to keep the flow within the channel. The way Highland Drive is situated, it's going uphill. So a lot of the superstructure is significantly or is higher than Taylorsville Road. So to me, it seems as though um there may not be a significant benefit. By making that much larger, because you would end up having to go, I'm going to say, away from Taylorsville Road due to the intersection. And that means you're getting higher and higher while Taylorsville Road's still staying low.
Sorry, so for those of us who may have lost track of all of that. The problem here is essentially that Taylorsville backs up. And instead of backing up up to additional stormwater facilities on Highland. It backs down into Mapleville. So much additional work above Taylorsville isn't going to help with the backup issue.
Well, um, the the storm drains that do exist on Taylorsville. Are actually directing upstream of Taylorsville. So in essence, it's just a recirculation when it backs up on the Taylorsville, it's trying to push it back into on the upstream side of Taylorsville.
Understand.
We would be proposing trying to to take all of that downstream of Taylorsville to that, to one of those basins. So you're relieving the pressure on that. And they, the, I'm not indicating that improvements to Highland isn't going to make a significant improvement. I, we, that is a complex situation that we would typically run a two D model and see what kind of improvement we would, we would be getting.
Thank you.
Can you, there's two D models, there's three D models, can you just explain to everybody what a two D model is, please?
So um, in essence, a two dimensional model takes a a surface. And runs flow through the surface and then you'll get, you can get a much more accurate determination of the amount of flow that's going in different places. The direction that it's going and the velocities that it's going. Whereas a Heclauser, a one D model is just cross sections and it's averaging between them. So you don't get anywhere near the detail, or I'm going to say the the benefit of actually understanding the flow, where it's going. And what it is that's causing that backup.
Okay. And then as we get into Maplevale, I think you've gone over this, but just I'll I'll simplify, I'll oversimplify. Basically, to try and protect the Maplevale homes from during a flood event. We're getting the northern and southern limits of Maplevale, adding many more inlets so that we can push water to the side. So it doesn't fill up in the middle, pull as much to the sides as we can into the basins. And then ultimately get everything to the canal, is that fair?
I would say in general, the idea is to get as much flow outside of Maplevale. But at the same time, show that we're reducing the flow that's going into the canal. What we've been unofficially told is that to add additional outlets or pipes going into the canal, you have to show that you're not increasing flow. Well, these basins with the infiltration rates that we were seeing, we could very easily show that we're reducing the flow into the canal. And that we may be able to then put um another outlet or two, either whether from Maplevale or the basin or wherever, back into the canal to try to relieve some of that backwater.
I think we've been officially told that, so it's when we've tried similar approaches. So that would be, that's an important issue to address if we are going to do something like this to make sure that. The canal folks, the DCNR will work with us on something. Now, again, I know you weren't, from a modeling perspective, once all this is done. Can you make any calls in terms of what type of storm event, when Maplevale, whether it will flood at all? And if so, at what type of storm event that would happen and what that might look like?
At at this point, no, we haven't gone into enough detail. The, I'm very sure that we can, there is, if we're basin B. I'm sorry, basin D is located. The flow coming out of that storm drain system flows back into Maplevale. Close to the pump station. And I know for, I'm, I'm extremely sure that the majority of the flow that we get on that side. Can be drained into the basin and head to the canal. I, at this point, I don't know how much flow that was, I've only seen pictures of ponding. The basin seaside, the north side is a little more complicated because of the residences there. I don't necessarily know a way to get the storm drain systems into the basin at this point. Because I don't know what depth we need or what size pipes need to be going in there. But it would, could, it would be a significant improvement.
And based on all, and thank you for that, based on all of this, have you, can, could you tell us if we asked you, hey, what? What should, what would give us the biggest bang for the buck? What what should be our number one, number two, number three priorities on down the line? Would you be able to do that?
If. I would say if DCNR um agreed to allowing one or two additional outfalls by showing that we're reducing the flow to the canal. Then those basins could be implemented to provide that. And then those outfalls to the canal can be set up where I'm going to say in strategic locations. To try to to avoid the Maplevale backwater. In that respect, I believe that's probably the more critical path. From that point on, then we have, and the driveway, the residential driveway. That is also a critical path because that um creates a condition where you end up with an awful lot of water. Overtopping on the Taylorsville before you even get to Highland Drive.
And I guess the last question for me is. What the other thing we have to consider, and there's been a lot of talk of this, this meeting especially, there will be more talk about this. When you look at our priority list, have, are you able to put rough order of magnitude costs alongside each of these recommendations yet?
At this point, no, we haven't, we haven't been asked to do it, but um. I don't think we have enough information either on the basins or how large they would need to be or or the storm drain systems or anything else. We could give a rough estimate of the type of restorations and maybe a general number. And I'm assume you're talking about just construction and design, not necessarily just design, so.
Soup to nuts.
Yes.
Nice, our budget meeting, so that these things we're going to be talking about very soon.
It would be very tough, I think, for me to come up with a number that, unless I came up with something very conservative that, and I would not want to scare somebody away either, so.
I think. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, John.
Yeah, I'm um, and I'm still learning some of the stuff on the stormwater management and the design, I'm not an engineer. So you haven't done a sort of CAD modeling yet of total flows through the system, right? So that's what the two D modeling would be for part of this, right?
So the, our recommendation um as part of the, I'm going to say the BRIC or the FEMA grant thing. Was to provide a two D model, in essence, heading from the Makefield Chase basin down into um the canal.
And that modeling would give you the maybe like gallons per minute? Or what would the metric give you in terms of flow rate?
We could run many different flows through that surface from a five hundred year storm event to a one year or base flow. And it, not only does it tell us in the existing conditions, how much flow we have going into Maplevale. But when we start applying um recommendations or proposed conditions. Then we can get an idea as to what the most optimum uh improvement would be. Now, they don't do storm drain systems, but it would allow us to know the flow that we would have to capture with a storm drain system.
Then in the simulation and modeling, um, one of the things that made the July fifteenth flood uh so terrifying in a way. Was the localization of where the rain fell and the intensity within a very short period of time. Can you can, you can localize and test out variations with the modeling then to get a sense of? What I would consider really bad scenarios like we had on July fifteenth?
There would be two ways we we would do it. One of the ways would be to actually try to take a look at water surface elevations and photos to see how high the water got in different locations. And then plug different flows in to see what matched those elevations. Then, and the other way we could do it is to actually say, okay, if we got six or seven inches of rain. If we set up a hydrologic model to get a flow, we can put that type of intensity in there and get a flow developed that way. I would actually prefer to to run a lot of flows and try to match the water surface elevations as opposed to hydrologic model, but.
Yeah, and and mainly this is because I want to understand how some of this works and the modeling around it. The basin C that you talked about, and I looked at that, that's a parcel the township owns, it's got a lot of trees right now. Are you anticipating significant tree removal as part of the basin?
Significantly, yes, yes.
There's a trade off there between, you know, the trees are absorbing water, but that they're probably not going to be as quick or as deep as the basin would be then, right?
Um, no, and and during flood events, there's not, the soils are already saturated.
Yeah.
Yeah, the trees aren't really doing anything during a flood. Now, not saying that when we remove the trees and lower the basin and create that condition, that we couldn't plant it with trees. The only problem is with something like that where you're worried about inflation and infiltration. You want to try to keep a lot of the carbon and a lot of the silt and sediment that develops with trees off the bottom.
And and my only thought there was aesthetically, I'd like to have trees around the outside. But tall grasses and stuff to absorb the water and manage it that way, that's best practice. So I'd rather have that as much as possible, I just visually don't want to wipe out like an acre of trees with no visual. People say, oh, but as long as we contain, well, the trade off, some aesthetics for for efficiency, but.
Yeah, you can definitely have the buffers around it and and um put colps run up on the photo. Next one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's visually attractive. That's fine, as long as there are like, you know, trees around it, maybe at the edges.
Well, and this is actually a very wet valley. Because of the infiltration, it would be dry, relatively dry and except for when it rains. So you would have a different type of plantings. You could put flowers or, I mean, you could landscape it nicely.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think in terms of just the trees are important in terms of their function for, you know, ingesting rainwater, providing oxygen, all that sort of stuff, but.
We, land studies is known for restoration, wetland creation, et cetera. When we're dealing with a lot of flooding issues, even such when we were working with Eloquent City in Maryland. Trees can also be a a major hindrance and an issue. And as such, they kind of need to be dealt that way.
Yeah.
But I have no problems with planting trees where they, they make sense, so.
Yeah, Eloquent City was scary, that one. Okay, yeah, thank you. This is kind of helpful in understanding how all this works.
Thank you. So a few questions, and we'll start with the slide that you're on right here. So I guess just more, because I've learned a lot through this process. To me, that looks marshy and unattractive and that prior scene of a deep cut stream back. You know, a stream bank that looks like a beautiful idyllic stream that just ambles through, right? But I think if you want to avoid flooding, we have to go back to what nature wants, and this is what nature wants to have, right? If you show the historical impacts map that you had demonstrated, it was really interesting to me seeing that people had decided to put right angles and straight lines in, right?
Yes.
And that over the course of fifty years, the stream went back to where the stream wants to be, because that's the contours of the land. That's the natures of the soils and the stream cutting its way. Is that generally? Is that generally an accurate assessment that this is the streams going where it wants to go?
Yes. I would say. The rate. It varies significantly based upon what type of improvements and. How far out of whack the existing stream is relative to the natural valley. But. When you think about the valley. Bottom. You have bedrock that starts relatively high coming off the slopes. And ends up at its lowest point in the center of the valley. And many times, most of the time. In the, I'm going to say seventeen eighteen hundreds, the streams were in essence ditch dredged in order to farm pasture agricultural purposes. And they were put on the hillside where bedrock is much typically much shallower. Well, over time, when the bed degrades. There's if it's on the hillside where bedrock is higher. It's going to erode the finer soils and work its way down into where the bedrock is lower. So evolution wise, generally, the stream is going to end up close to the center of the valley as long as it's still available.
And the the other benefit of this wetland that's relevant to budget discussions and something the residents have asked about. We've done dredging. We've done cleaning. And like you said, it doesn't do much afterwards, right? You got to know when the flood is about to happen and get out there and pull all that out. But when we have a wetland like this, when the leaves fall. They get captured in the grasses, they break down into the soil, they don't clump up in a stream bed and then wash down. Block a pipe later.
There's very little movement of material because the vegetation and the root density keeps it in place.
So this work would address resident concerns around making sure that we have a maintenance schedule for clearing stream beds. By reducing the need to regularly go out and clear those beds.
And in essence, the the basins on the north and south of Maple Vale. I believe that and basin might not be the right term, but. I believe those would almost be maintenance free also. There would be very little. Every now and then I would think if if you start to see ponding. Then there you might have too much leaf or carbon or something in it. Just go and scrape it around and get back down into the gravels and it'll. Perform as it as it did previously.
You you had a comment on again on that slide 11, that overview slide. Related to the proposed armored stream bank. Where you had talked about the bank being so high, and I think you had mentioned. That it was so high that the water couldn't really exit the road into the stream, right?
Yes, the. If you think about the the capacity of the. Bridge and the capacity of the channel. If the capacity of the channel is smaller than what the crossing can handle. Then you're going to end up getting. Flooding of that crossing. So at the first meander bend. Were on the 90 degree meander bend downstream of. Those banks are extremely high, and I believe they're very close to or higher than what the roadway elevation would be. Therefore, when that and that right bend significantly. Increases. I'm going to say it's an obstruction. So the flow hits it and raises the water surface elevation. Because now you've got to make a 90 degree turn. Well, that that type of condition very well could have a lot of influence on how often those roads flood. If you. At that 90 degree bend, there's not a lot of room in there with the residences. If you went in and lowered. That obstruction to a point that's maybe. Four or five, six feet lower than than the top of the bank. Then that flow gets relieved and the water surface elevation is significantly lower. As you work towards the crossings and then the crossings control and not that high bank in that 90 degree bend.
So which all sounds wonderful for the people who live around those 90s, right? I mean, I get the the problems there. But it also sounds like it is going to move more water downstream more quickly, right? Or am I not?
Now, the water is the same volume. It would just be a different place and it would probably be shallower.
Okay.
And spread across. Yeah, it's not. There wouldn't be an increase.
No, good. Yeah, no, I listen, I thank you for the presentation and all the detail. I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions from the the audience here tonight, too.
Any more questions from the board? I'm excited. We're finally going to talk about basin naturalization as I use the term. Dan's probably saying that's not what it means, but. He knows what I mean. So with that, who's first? The public is going to come up one by one to the mic. And they will ask questions. As you know, full name and whether or not you're a resident of the township, please.
24 Maple Vale Drive. I have three types of questions. One is before any of this work gets done. The monitoring of what's going on. I would like to see in your budget. A monthly drone tracking of the stream. So that you can see where any buildup is happening. Prior to the work getting done. It shouldn't be that expensive. Drones are relatively cheap nowadays. The hardware, the labor to do it will be one man for. Four hours. And then you'll take multiple people watching it. You know, so 20 hours. A month to monitor that type of buildup. That won't move anything, but at least then. You'll know what has to be moved prior to the the work being done. The it sounds like basin D. Is the first thing that should happen? Is that what you're suggesting? We only do one thing first?
It would be one of the first things, yeah.
What would be the timeline? Or even starting a project like that, assuming budget is not an issue. Assuming. And bad assumption that now people will let us do it. What would be the timeline for doing something like that?
Ward, I don't know. You had mentioned the brick. Just I don't know if we should pause and maybe just share. Some of the thoughts in terms of implementation and funding, some of the. Proposed improvements because I'm thinking it's going to get into. You know, financial conversations. And again, there's additional evaluation, but there's additional resource that we've we've. Already started to have the conversation with with Pima about in order to access. So. Jim, I don't know if you want to come up as well, maybe. Just so that, again, folks aren't posing questions regarding schedules. Costs, those kinds of things when when we have, you know, we have a funding application that we're also looking at. Pursuing and there's action later on the agenda regarding regarding that issue. So it might be helpful to share that information as well.
I would say.
Can you get your mic, please?
The sequence. Even though basin D is somewhat critical. The sequence of working with DCNR. May, I'm going to say influence on what things get done first. Because no matter what, we still have to discharge basin D somewhere. So.
Jim, if you're going to talk, can you steal the mic from him?
Good evening, Jim Majewski here. We did meet with Pima and talk about the different grant. Funding that's available for projects. One of the programs is called the BRIC program, which is. Let's see, what is it? Building resilience and infrastructure. Something. Brick is what they call it. And basically, that's a funding mechanism that's used to. Try to mitigate flooding in an area. There is a 25% cost share on that. That would be. Funded by the township. In order to put this application in. We need to identify the scope of work. And I think. Land studies is pretty much outline what some of the. Issues are and what things need to be done. We need to do like more intense engineering. Rather than just the visual assessment, but then go to the next stage. Of actual hard engineering in order to develop a study. The grant is due basically now. Should the grant be awarded by FEMA? It would probably be notified to the township sometime late summer. Early fall of next year. They have a three year period of performance. Once you get the grant, obviously, it wouldn't take that long. But it would take some time, I think, to do all the necessary. Engineering studies, stream studies, flood studies. And hydrology, hydraulics in order to come up with. A real good plan that's solid. To implement many of the things that were outlined in this visual assessment and recommendations.
Ward, I don't know if you want to just touch maybe on the scope and some some additional detail. Just again, it gets sort of gets into. Sort of next steps as it relates to implementation, following the visual assessment.
So we had, we broke it down into two different tasks and the first task was. Working with. Basin B and the area up there between Hillwood Terrace and Makefield Chase. And trying to resolve the stream issues through there. And within that task. We also. Included everything that's occurring down at Taylorsville Road and Maple Vale. And that was everything from basin design. The 2D modeling for existing conditions and proposed recommendations. Storm drain design, trying to figure out a way to get. The flow into the basins. Obviously, we would have to be working with DCNR to see. What they would allow us to do with the canal. And then these. And then there would be permitting associated with. Those different improvements. We would recommend. Getting what we would call a watershed wide permit. Which would cover the the entire watershed. And we could, that permit could be, I'm going to say, applied for a period of 10, 15 years. However. Yeah, along we needed to make the improvements from top to bottom. And then the second task was actually doing the restoration through. Township property and the property with the duck ponds. To reduce the bed load and debris and then also try to create some additional flood storage. And that would also have been fallen within that permit. And it would have included 2D modeling and the design and the construction drawings. There was no, I'm going to say, construction associated with those two tasks, though.
I I think. Obviously, the engineering design and and studies and modeling and all that stuff is. Important, clearly. But getting back to the gentleman's point about. You know, C and D. Can't really do much with those unless DCNR agrees. To to our approach, right? Can those be constructed without? Discharging the canal somehow and having the same benefit or similar benefit?
Basin C definitely can. Basin D might be able to. Be installed, but. Right now, it would almost have to, if the infiltration failed, it would almost have to drain back to where it does presently. Unless we could drain it to the canal. But. The infiltration rates are so good, no matter what, it's still going to be a significant benefit. So you. You would have to design that basin. To fit the storm drain systems along Maple Vale Drive on that side. And then possibly later with DCNR, then change the outfall.
But I think we'll have to put. Renewed. I'll be positive. We'll have to renew our conversations with DCNR. To get them to agree. To or at least consider and then to agree. Potential new outfalls to the canal.
It would be beneficial to actually get an idea of the depth of the gravel. It couldn't be done with the backhoe, but. If it's 15, 20 feet deep, you can put an awful lot of water in those areas and you're not going to see anything coming out.
So would you do it? Get a drill rig in there and do a geotechnical boring? Or how would you do that?
And that would probably be too difficult with all the vegetation. We would probably use a geo probe on tracks. Or something or ATV to try to get in there and just get an idea how deep the gravel is. I'm sure we probably won't hit resistance for quite a distance, but. We could get the information we needed without getting a drill rig in there.
So Jim, I don't know if you're done talking about the building resilient infrastructure and communities grant. Or how we want to proceed.
I just, I don't know if there's still additional questions that folks have. I just wanted to make sure that there is.
The gentleman was counting and he only got to one. So I think he has two more points that he wants to make. So I'm not sure how best to proceed. Okay, I apologize.
I don't, I mean, somebody can walk it. That's inefficient. But if you schedule a drone video of it. Not only can the person walking it see it. But any other people related to supervisors. The landscaping crew that's going to pull out the debris. They all know what they're doing. So that's one. The two is when it's going to start. It sounds like best case scenario. Without attaching it to the canal. If shovel is not going in dirt for over a year. So what is going to be done in the meantime? So this doesn't happen. Between now. And first shovel and dirt is not going to fix it. But we're talking at least a year, maybe two years. Before we see significant. Changes to the watershed for the future. So what is going to be done? In these next two years?
Other than what we've done and what we're doing, right? Because we've done and Maple Vale. I'm sorry, not allowed to call it Highland Part Two anymore. What do we call it these days?
Well, just the quick recap, I guess, I think is what you're getting at in terms of the work done to date. Right? The cleaning of the streams and everything you're aware of, probably.
And and we had very good results this weekend.
Absolutely, I've.
A weekend to have very bad results. So I'm pleased with what's been done. I definitely want to point that out. But the problem wasn't that the stream couldn't move the water. The problem was. Too much other stuff was in the stream. So the water couldn't move.
And that's that's the primary thing that the township has done is to clean. Debris from the streams.
Once. That won't last two years.
Several hundred feet.
That that won't last two years.
It's again, they've cut back trees, so you will not have trees falling into the stream. They've pulled out massive amounts of debris and cobble. So if you're familiar with how a stream fills up with cobble. It takes a long time for that type of debris.
That's not what he just said. He said, one bad storm, it can cobble back.
It the amount of cobble. So there's this thing called the river continuum theory, right? That was done by the Shroud Water Research Center. They're the ones that developed this whole theory about how cobbles fill in streams. The biggest ones are at the headwaters of the stream. The smallest stuff gets carried down. We've been cleaning that out continuously for a good stretch of that stream. Now there are portions of the stream that we don't have access to because they're private property. But our Public Works Group, and I don't think Derek's here tonight.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, I didn't see him. Tallest guy in here. I couldn't see him. They're continuously going back there as part of a maintenance program. So it's not a one and done sort of thing. But it's we're getting very good. Results from what's been done. He's going to continue to do that. So the O and M. Plan is key. That to your point, that's key. But we were keeping an eye on that because they're constantly out there.
And Dan, let me just let me interrupt both of you because this is a good time for the public service announcement reminder, right? Because we did have a resident come in and share that he used to think it was fun to throw stuff into the creek and see what would happen. Please, people, I know no one in this room would do that, but for those who are watching at home. If your land abuts a creek. We need you to help keep it clean. It is not where you can put your leaves and your branches and whatnot. They land. Downstream, causing a lot more harm than you might realize. If you have an issue, if you land a butt a stream. Call Public Works. We'll see if what we can do to help. Because this is not going to just be fixed by us if we have, if the whole community doesn't embrace. The idea of keeping these things clean, including. Those sewers that are on your street. People want to. Fill them with leaves. It's not a good thing.
Thank you. So as part of the leaf program, that was another thing we did. I know I got a lot of calls on the round two of the leaf pickup. Because people were upset that they thought the Public Works Department went around and picked up the leaves too early, a week early, and they weren't going to be able to get their leaves out. That wasn't the case. What they actually did was do, because we had a storm coming, they went out on a Friday to check. To check inlets to make sure they were clean because people were still putting their leaves out despite all the public service announcements. Putting their leaves over top of inlets. So they went through. And did an extra one just to clean inlets up before a big storm a couple Fridays ago. And then the following week, they got back on their normal leaf pickup schedule. And they're going to keep doing that. Because a lot of this is really just. Maintenance. A lot of keeping, it's just like anything else. You got to keep it clean if you want to use it, right? Basic stuff. Now, in terms of projects that are coming up, right? Continuing with the stream cleaning, the next big one, and I think we just. Were awarded a grant for part of it, right? Did I see that?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So the next big one is what we're calling. I think it used to be called Maple Vale Phase Two. It's now called the Highland Drive Improvements, to your point, something like that. So we just got a grant award, not for the whole cost of it, but it's in our budget to do it anyway. To replace the culvert crossing where the stream goes underneath Highland as it intersects with Taylorsville. So we're putting in. A larger box culvert to provide more flow. In addition to that. If you were, I don't recall if you were there, and I apologize, at the open house where. at the open house where Isaac's team presented the, this next project, they're going to be putting in additional inlets along Highland to collect more flows. It flows down the hill and do some repaving and whatnot. So that's the next big one coming up to catch flows coming down Highland before it gets, gets to the stream.
I did see that, and I knew that was separate from this program. My biggest concern, though, again, is going to be the maintenance, maintenance, maintenance.
Always.
In the budget and schedule, because life happens. If it's not on the schedule, it's, it's going to be missed. And we just can't have this happen again in the next few years before it is really fixed. And a few years is probably being generous.
Better or worse, I'm here for the next six. So I'm not going to lose sight of it. I can guarantee you that.
Okay, who's next?
Raina Stoddard, 220 Meadow Drive. Just to reiterate what he said, Derek has reminded us that he's only got six employees, and we know that we haven't hired new employees, and that there is no schedule for maintenance. So it would be actually nice to see that he has the power to use his six fellows to continue to have a routine in the next couple of years, because obviously, he doesn't think he can do it. It's been explained, he stressed how difficult it was at one of these meetings, how difficult it would be for him to continue to maintain it, because he has other things to do already. So we'd love to see or hear that plan and see that schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, April.
Hi, April Bulwich-Clover, 20 Maple Vale Drive. First of all, I want to thank you so much for preparing the study and for preparing this from the township to make budget available for this. It was, it was nice to see it actually documented out here, but also kind of brought a tear to my eye because it shows how bad it really is. It reminded me of the PowerPoint that we saw about two years ago, that it showed how much water our drains could take and how much water we got that day. So we really appreciate that. I just have a couple of questions about the basin surrounding the Maple Vale neighborhood, specifically the basin D. What impact would that have to the path, the existing path that's there that takes people to the bridge? Because I know that's pretty popular for the area to access the canal. And then, second part of that question is, there is a big pit area back there behind 12 and a half Maple Vale, between 14. Is there potential for some of that basin D to drain into there and prevent it from getting to the canal? And how do you consider that space?
I would say, I would say the path probably couldn't be a problem. We could arrange the path going from the bridge back to Taylorsville. The gravel pit was kind of a, I'm going to say, an off the cuff description of if the canal, DCNR doesn't necessarily work, it might be a place that we could discharge it. But I was not, at the time, was not sure whether, if the pit was on township property or DCNR property.
It's actually on private property of that owner of 12.
Okay, 12 and a half. 12 and a half ones out?
12 and a half, thank you.
And then one more question, just regarding the, the number of drains you're proposing in the neighborhood. Is that eight?
Yeah, that's just a symbol.
Yeah. So they, they haven't actually done the full scale engineering analysis yet. So they'll come up with some, as they go through it, they will be able to pinpoint that a little better.
Okay. And if there were to be some on Taylorsville, then it's Penn Dot and all that kicks back up again?
Well, for example, like we've been talking, one of the things we've been talking about is putting in a sidewalk in that area connecting to Yardley Borough. And as part of doing, you know, what sidewalk could allow for some more inlets that could direct water to these two, two basins. It also puts a little bit of a, little bit of a dam in front of things, right? So, because the, if Taylorsville floods a couple of inches, that, that's a few feet in Maple Vale, plus or minus. So if you can, if you get a sidewalk that's eight inches tall or whatever, that, that blocks a lot of water going to Maple Vale and gets it in inlets.
Yeah, would that provide a lot of benefit, that's for sure.
So that's one of the things we're talking about. That wasn't mentioned here, but I know we've talked about it and we're looking at that. So that, that would be part, but again, everything has to be engineered, designed, and directed.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to what we're going to do in the meantime, so we can keep the neighborhood together. And Dan, thank you for calling over the weekend to check on us both the last two weekends when we had.
Next? I don't actually get to call on people. I just, no. I see your faces light up, and I'm like, come on.
So, Larissa Luzecki, 18, Maple Vale Drive. So what, moving forward, what is Land Studies' role? They proposed, you know, a very encouraging plan. What's your role moving forward? Are they still going to be involved?
They, we would, we would probably need an additional, well, we would need an additional scope. So ultimately, it would come back to the board of supervisors and, you know, there would be a determination in terms of continued involvement.
Larissa, there's certain, correct me if I misspeak here, there are certain things that, that they do from a, from a higher level planning perspective and restoration perspective that they could do potentially. There are other things that I, I don't think they do as much of, like detailed engineering design of basins and whatnot. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, maybe depending on what it is. That may be something that we put out to an RFP for an engineering firm to do, kind of like we, when Isaac's team is, is looking at stuff and makes recommendations. So it'll be a combination of things, I think.
More like consultants, like they would act as consultants?
Potentially, but I mean, that's, it depends on what the future scopes are and what we, what they
We anticipate they're going to be around for a while. When we looked for someone who could do this kind of work, we wanted somebody who had deep knowledge and bench strength to help us do this. So, but just the nature of how we have to govern and putting things on the agenda. So here tonight, the next meeting will be January 2nd, which will be a very small meeting. It'll just be a reorg meeting. And then the following meeting, January 17th, expect more things on that agenda, I suspect.
Okay. I just, just to be clear, there's, as we all know, there's been a lot of work. And I think it really, in my opinion, was beneficial in the last two rainstorms we've had. Way back when Land Studies was first introduced to us, it was proposed that as they were going through their analysis, they would, if they proposed something and it was something of, they felt necessary that you would implement what they were suggesting. Has that happened at all? Like what they suggested? Like, most importantly, near that 295, like how does all that work mesh with their recommendations? Because there was a lot of work done. And it looks like, is that basin C?
One near, the one near the highway?
Yeah, 295.
So what they've done to date versus what's on here? So I, correct me if I misspeak here, buddy. So there's been a lot of stream cleaning in that area, right? We just talked, and there's been a lot of trees taken down in, in the area immediately south or east of the guide rail that's right there. I, I see it every day, too. So that's what we've done. I think some of that was based on recommendations from your team along the way, not necessarily some we're talking about tonight, but some of that tree clearing and, and work that was done there was based on, on the guidance from Land Studies to provide some more storage.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. So when you say basin, you mean deep? You mean something, a depressed area?
Basin's probably not a good term for this. It would have to be deep in order to get the, the storm drain system and the pipes into it. But then it could actually be a gradual slope that leads all the way to the confluence of where the Tributary and Canal meet. It doesn't necessarily have to be a pond type situation. But yeah, the gravel is about seven feet deep, but what would control is the elevation of getting the water to that point from Taylorsville Road and Maple Vale Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Shrubko, Maple Vale resident. I just have, just a follow up from what she was just asking. When you're looking at that proposal for basin C, and you're talking about clearing all the woods, and you're saying it needs to definitely be a certain depth, because you're looking at, it has to be lower to prevent the water from going into the canal. I believe that's one of the things. On that chart over there, it says that you might not have to have an, an outlet, and that it could serve as a pond. And that would be my only concern as a resident, thinking that all the water will still continue to go down toward the Maple Vale area, and it will be collected. But if you don't put an outlet in there, then my concern is it could be backing up. And then, once again, the water tends to flow from north to south. And then you're looking at all the, the homes that would be kind of caught in between. So I would just be a little concerned about, you know, not having an outlet. You have an outlet proposal to go down the path for basin D, that's already currently there to run through. But that would be my only concern, just if you don't put something in there to appease the canal, and saying it could be collected as a pond, that would be just one of the concerns as a resident. Thank you very much for all your work you've been doing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Basin D would actually have an appropriate drainage that would lead to the stream. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to go to the canal. So that would, that would have an outfall. Could have an outfall no matter what. It doesn't have to be a pond.
I guess I, yes. So one of the things is that the stream still flows just north of the, the basin, I use air quotes. So it could, you have an alternative discharge point, right? That's good. And, and not for nothing, when, when we talk about ponding, during the design phase, they would model it to make sure that it doesn't do that. Because you don't, there's other issues with ponding other than just flooding, right? With stagnation and
Yeah, just where I'm sitting, I'm just looking at the chart.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And it says in writing, that's the only reason why I was just bringing that up.
Makes, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Ralph Freesha. I live at 229 Meadow Drive. The last two weekends, the two rainfall, so I had both weekends, I had eight inches of water in my backyard. My whole backyard was flooded still. I was just wondering, are you going to be doing a sidewalk on Taylorsville Road anytime soon?
We've, we've talked about putting, putting design in the budget for next year, and we're going to go after some grants to do it. It, that probably will not be a fast process. I wish it would be, because it's, we're going after state grants and trying to connect to the sidewalk that's in, that's being finished in Yardley Borough along Main Street there. But hopefully, we can get through that process pretty
Yeah, because I'm getting the flooding that's coming from behind my neighbors through Taylorsville Road. So, I ran my pump Sunday that does 50 gallons a minute for six hours.
Yeah. I'm wondering if there, just back there, I think, or Jim even, there's a, are those, are you on the side of Meadow where there's a swale in the back between, is the swale gone completely or is it blocked?
It's pretty much gone. You know, my neighbor on the right of me, she put it back into, she dug it up a couple of years ago. But mine's like just fencing.
Fencing, okay. And Derek, do you have anything? I know, I know you walked up here. I don't want you to waste your steps. Good? Okay. Okay. So the sidewalk thing is something we are trying to pursue?
Yeah, I just to alleviate some of the water coming through.
Yeah, no, exactly. And I think one, one of the neighbors may have just dug a French drain or something.
Yes, two, two houses over, next, yes, it's two houses over, three.
Yeah. So that, like I said, that's something in the works that we're trying to push through. I'm not sure about how fast we can do that, but hopefully it is fast.
I was just asking.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Larissa Luzecki, 18, Maple Vale Drive. I just have a question, clarification. I'm sure you guys touched on this in pieces. I just want to make sure I understand it, heard it right. So great presentation. Thank you for all the work. Very cool. So from what I got out of that presentation, in order to better analyze what's going on, these guys tell me do some 2D hydro model analyses and that kind of stuff. My question is, when are you going to make the decision to turn these guys on to complete that work? Is it going to take like a week, a month, two months? Because that is, to me, the first start of a delay, at least for what these guys have been doing and where they need to go next. And then, once they're turned on, do we have some kind of an idea as to when we might get a report out to see what the results of that analysis are? And then we can also, let's just say, help you make decisions on what is a priority, and then look at schedule and money. And I heard you guys also say this is kind of a multi-part. I apologize. I'll give it to you all at once. I've heard you guys looking to get state grant money to do some of this work. Great, I understand that. But are we really waiting for just that? Or is the township throwing up some of their own money to get some of this work started? Because we pay taxes, and I don't want to wait any longer than we have to for any of this stuff. So if you can elaborate a little bit on that, like I said, I think I heard pieces. I think I heard it all right, but I'd like to hear it one more time. Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of process, and Mr. Kratzler can correct me if I misspeak here, because that's a, an expenditure, it'll have to go on a, on a board agenda, future board agenda for a vote. That's, that's part of the, the rules of the game here, you know? I don't know that it would
It's the January 17th date that I just talked about.
More than likely, yeah. So a very, I would expect it to be a pretty, an agenda that comes up pretty soon, early in the year. I don't make the agenda, but I would guess that would be pretty early. And we'd have to either put out an, we, we may have to RFP that to say this is what needs to do, and let's get proposals so we can vote on it at the next meeting, kind of thing, or the, because it, again, these 20, 30 day processes that we have to follow. Depending on how much it is, we might be able to just say, go with it. Let's go for it. I don't, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to do it, that we have to make sure we dot the i's, cross the t's from a legal perspective. But those studies can happen very quickly. When it comes to, and, and that helps you start, start to do the modeling and whatnot. And then from there, when it comes to the actual design, that's another scope that we have to get, get approved, you know, we have to vote on and approve it, and that takes its own process. Now, in terms of the grants, depending on the grant, sometimes it's better to do some design ahead of time. So you get a shovel ready project for whatever grant you're going after. Other grants cover some of that design work. So depending on the grant that's available and that, that we identify we can go after, that may dictate some of our process, too. At the same time, we need to be engaging our state folks, along with DCNR, to, to address those issues, right? Because that'll dictate how we do some of this, how we actually do the design, what some of our basic goals are. So it's, like you said, multi steps and multi, so we're going to be going a lot of different directions very early to figure out, okay, this is what we can do based on the data, you know, in terms of how deep things go and where the discharges could or should be. And also what we can do based on what DCNR tells us and, and other agencies tell us, and what we'll call pre-application meetings, for lack of a better term. So we get all that upfront, and that can happen pretty quickly. And then from there, it's the grant issues, it's looking at construction costs and all that other, other stuff that follows that up. And that's what we start building on throughout the year. We do have some money set aside for some of these projects in the 2024 budget, but there's more to come off of that. I don't know if I answered all your questions, but that's the basic process.
Yeah. And so we, we need to confirm this, but, or we, we will confirm this, but under the BRIC program, Jim had sent me a note that the pre-award costs are eligible from the, the date of the issuance of, of the notice of funding opportunity. So again, you know, if that's, we, we could advance this quicker, even prior to the receipt of the grant, with the expectation that, that we would pursue a grant and potentially receive reimbursement of some of the costs associated with the work.
Yeah, that's correct. And that's what Pima told us when we had spoken to them. And part of the grant program also, you need to do outreach to residents, because if you're doing a project, as we are, that impacts many people, you don't sort of just do it in a vacuum. You include the residents like we've been trying to do over the last several months.
I know when we get to Agenda Item 12F, you'll also tell us about the Flood Mitigation Assistant Grant from FEMA that we'll be working on, but we will get there.
If I can add, in relation to the Pima topic, the governor did come, right, to Yardley Borough a couple of weeks ago to sign a bill implementing a task force to help with flood insurance, talked about the flood issues in the area. Director Padfield from Pima came down, was a participant in that signing, which is just to say that once we do apply for that grant, please feel free to reach out to Representative Warren, Senator Senter Sierra, and your state representatives to let them know that that application is in. And I'm certain Director Padfield would like to make that move quickly.
Do any other public comment? Any public comment on the line?
There's no public comment on the line.
Okay. Then with any other supervisors?
Just one, one final remark?
This is your last night, Colin.
I know. This is my last night here with all of you. So I wanted to point out and thank Supervisor-elect Ross for being in the room tonight to make sure that he hears all of this commentary and is a part of this conversation. So there is absolutely continuity. You're not missing a step. You have You have a well-informed supervisor that's coming in to advocate for you. So thank you, Mr. Ross.
Well, with that, we will close this conversation and move on to Agenda number, Item Number Eight. All right, thank you so much, gentlemen. Really appreciate it. And I love the big blowups that we will keep on display for some time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Additionally, we will place the material on the township website as well.
There's matching under. Okay, we are moving on. My apologies to Agenda Item Number Eight, the Engineers' Report. And the first thing would be Consider Payment Certificate Number Four for the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project in the amount of $28,248.50. Isaac?
Yes, before you tonight is Payment Certificate Number Four for the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project. This would be the second-to-last payment certificate in front of the board, with the last one being some minor items to verify the ASBOL plan and they provide their maintenance bond to close out the work. This payment, Number Four, is in the amount of $28,248.50. The remainder of the contract following this payment would be $11,543.97. We expect that last payment to be at the next board meeting. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, tonight is payment number four.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Any discussion from the board? Go ahead, Dan.
Want to just answer Isaac without me asking?
Yes, it has.
He did, he told you the number and yet you asked anyway.
It has been verified for all the complete work.
Everything's good?
Yes.
$11,000 remaining. Okay, any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes five-zero. B?
B is the consideration for Financial Security Release, Number Nine, which is the final release proposed for the Saint Ignatius.
Ignatius.
Thank you. Subdivision Estates at Sandy Run in the amount of $68,935.61. The final security release verifies what they had in financial security escrow for construction of the project. It's verified to be complete before the request is prepared. And tonight is their final one to close out the project.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Is there any discussion from the board? Your mic is on, Dan. I don't know if that's subconscious or.
Probably is. So you're comfortable with everything completed and they have enough? This is the final one, so there's nothing left to do from punch list?
Correct.
Okay.
Isaac, it seems like that, I thought that project was done a while ago where there's some kind of hangups or something and that's taken so long to come through for final?
There was a bit of delay from when it was like physically completed and their final release here, just more on the paperwork side to have all their ducks in a row. So, yeah, I'm sure they're just as pleased as we are to have it on the agenda here to close it out before the end of the year.
Any other comments from supervisors? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. C?
C is the consideration to authorize the advertisement or the bidding phase for the Highland Drive Drainage Improvement Project. So, you know, well timed with the presentation that we just had from Land Studies, this project, as it's been looked at the last few weeks and months, really, really, you know, coming off of the open house that we had with the neighborhood. This is a piece of that puzzle that Land Studies really just went through in depth. The drainage area that makes its way down, as we just saw, that flows through the stream is over 300 acres. That goes underneath that culvert that's through Highland Drive. The Highland portion itself that comes down towards Taylorsville is a little over 27 acres. So as it was stated, making the culvert enormous is not beneficial really, but to upsize it from what it is now, which is significantly undersized, will improve the flow to get downstream, avoid the backups that do wind up going across Taylorsville Road. The focus on Highland Drive itself is to increase the capture and get the water from the surface down into the pipes, into the stream. Again, minimizing how much flows right into Taylorsville and eventually makes its way across. So this project is still being finalized on the permitting side with the DEP. We had a pre-application meeting with them and it went very well. They have their timeline for turning around the information, pretty much their minimal amount of time, which is 40 days altogether, they told us, could be up to 90 for a regular one. So they're on board and they're in agreement with our approach. And as soon as that is finalized, we'll have it out to public bid as soon as we can. So tonight would be requesting the authorization to move into that bidding phase. And then for the board, once it is bid, of course, once the bids are opened and the prices are received, it would come back before the board for consideration before any award to move forward.
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the advertisement of the Highland Drive Drainage Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Dan. Any discussion from the board?
I would, I would just say we need, let's, based on everything we've heard tonight and for several weeks now, it's important that we keep moving this one forward along with everything else that we're doing associated with the watershed. So sooner we can get there, the better, so.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Twice.
Motion passes five and a half zero.
Thank you. I'll add to that too, just because it was discussed with Land Studies, the recommendations they had for kind of as the stream comes down there, we've, you know, been in discussion with kind of what their thoughts are with that as well. So none of what's proposed with the Highland Drive project conflicts with that. If anything, it would kind of put in place some elements that could be, you know, even more improved with some additional work in that area. So we're looking forward to that.
Sure.
All right. First couple items on your report, same, same topic. You're looking.
Are you referring to the Engineers' Report?
Engineers' Report, yeah, the Maplevale Drive 1820 Site Restoration and then Stream Clearing at Taylorsville Road. It looks, finalizing your general permit submission for paid app, submission deadline is 1/20/2024. Can you talk about what's, what goes into that, what that permit covers?
That is really the permanent permit for the pipe and repair work that was done under the emergency permit for the outlets to the canal there. So the emergency permit expires after a certain amount of time. This is to, yeah, it's.
No new work, it's just administrators check the boxes that they get the actual permit application.
Correct, yeah. Well, once the time comes where we can hopefully look into additional discharges, you know, down the line, it would be a different permit application that would go in for that.
Right. And then number two is the stream clearing at Taylorsville Road parcel and Prospect Farm Drive parcel. You had, did you have a meeting with DEP on that one as well, or Army Corps?
We did, we met with them. Their main action items coming out of that for the township and for our office really was to analyze where the wetland boundaries were in the field, having a, actually, you know, wetland study done out there. As we heard with the Land Studies, look at it as well, which we've kind of been looking at this item in conjunction with them. It's kind of a cost benefit at this point to see if, if removing a lot from that stretch of stream actually helps with what we're trying to do overall with the issue of stormwater management down there. Or if, if it may not be, you know, highest on the priority list there. So the clearing and getting the debris out was definitely something that was an initial push there that Public Works and a lot of the township staff helped complete. This next part, which would be, it talks about the gravel bars, kind of the, some of the obstructions that are part of a regular stream but could cause flooding in certain situations, that's, that's being looked at if it's, if it's a next step for that or if that actually helps the water from coming down too fast.
Do you have that Sheet 11 still in front of you that they gave us?
Or their packet? I did.
Their packet, yeah. Just for clarity, is that the, the stretch of stream from the red asterisk, they'll call it, to the letter A, roughly?
Bear with me for a minute, I didn't mark the page numbers, that's Colin did, which is a smart move.
It's the proposal.
And I'm looking at it backwards. I guess just to explain, yeah, it's the, it's the stream on either side of Taylorsville Road there. Yep. Yeah, so that red asterisk is pretty much that stream right before it goes down a little bit further and crosses underneath Taylorsville. This is the portion that kind of follows the on-ramp to 295 going towards the river. And then the western part is the stream that comes down through that pedestrian bridge they pointed out and some other items along the way.
Over there, okay. When do you think we'll know more about what, what is recommended there?
Well, the wetland study really identifies kind of the parameters that can be worked within, in that area. So that will really, I think, clarify kind of what can be done in regards to that stretch of stream. And then I think with that, we'll have further conversation with Land Studies, with maybe the DEP as well, just to see if that's a worthwhile expense and endeavor for the township to really sink into.
Wet, you know, a wetland delineation on a parcel that size is usually only about a day effort.
Yeah, it wouldn't take too long out there.
Yeah, so they're going to be doing that pretty soon or have they already done it?
They have not walked it yet. So that would be something that I would think, where we are in the year, probably early January and if not before the end of the year here, and get that all on paper to describe what we found.
How are we with the, what's the latest on the Woodside Road Bike Path?
The Woodside Road Bike Path, and I'll scroll onto that one in the report. We've been able to confirm with PICO that they have what they needed and requested for, what they do on their end is they have their design team put together the, the plan and contracts with their contractor that actually moves the poles. So that process is underway. Their timetable that they provided that, that would be done in the winter. Once that is complete, then we have the ability to shift the trail, to straighten it out in areas that have to go around the existing poles until they've been able to be moved. There's some other final items with the constructor that we have. Those are trying to be addressed as soon as possible. Some of them do have to wait until the poles move to be completed. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other supervisors? Any public comment? Okay, moving on then, we are on to Agenda Item Number Nine, the Managers' Report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So the first item this evening for the board's consideration is Resolution 23-31, fixing tax rates and special levies for 2024 and then adopting the 2024 budget. As the board is aware, the board adopted a preliminary budget and authorized making it available for public inspection on November the 20th. Notice of its availability was, was published in the Bucks County Courier-Times. So the required statutory requirements have been met as it relates to notice and the public inspection period. And so at this point, the budget is available for your discussion and ultimately for your consideration. We received no feedback or no request to inspect the budget in the office. Again, the budget was available online, so to the extent that folks reviewed it electronically, we're not certain on that, but there were no substantive comments or comments that we received relative to the, to the proposed 2024 budget. So the budget reflects, as the board has been focused on, you know, maintaining core services and continuing to prioritize investment in community infrastructure. Again, we had lengthy conversation, obviously, around priority infrastructure. And so the budget allocates funds and also provides some flexibility as it relates to some of the capital projects to reallocate based on priority as things materialize. Again, a number of those projects are not going to be implemented immediately upon the start of the fiscal year. And so as a result of that, there, there's some, again, opportunity for reallocation as the board sees fit throughout the year based on what materializes with, with some of the more pressing priorities that the, that the township is looking at pursuing. So again, before you is Resolution 23-31, fixing tax rates and special levies for 2024. And then also as part of that, adopting the budget for the 2024 fiscal year. Again, happy to address any questions or provide any additional information that the board or the, the audience may have.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 23-31, fixing the tax rates and special levies and adopting the 2024 budget.
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by Dan. Sorry. Motion made by John, seconded by Dan. With that, I'll open it up to the board for questions or do, I mean, I think you gave enough overview and I think we were all here for two special budget meetings, et cetera, but.
Sure. I don't have anything additional at this point that I, that I want to point out. Again, as, as we've talked about, there are some items that we need to address moving forward. You know, the board is, is, I'm sure, committed to, to doing that. But as it relates to the 2024 budget, I have no additional comments at this point.
Any supervisors? Okay, so any public comment on Resolution 23-31, fixing the tax rates and special levies? Any public comment on the line? Nope. Nope. Okay. Hearing none, I call the question.
There's no public comment online.
Thank you. Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Budget passes five to zero. And then we're on to Agenda Item B, which is Consider Approval of Resolution 23-32, adopting the 2024 fee schedule.
Yes, again, as noted, this would adopt an updated fee schedule for 2024. Again, the fee schedule is a comprehensive fee schedule, touching a variety of different operations that the, in service areas that the township provides. Again, staff has, has reviewed it from sort of a peer comparative perspective as to how we are positioned relative to our peer communities here in Bucks County and looked for areas where there may be gaps. The budget that was just adopted is, is in part, obviously, informed by the fee schedule that, that is before you. Is Jim in the audience? I'm sorry, Jim Majewski worked closely on this issue, so I wanted him to be available.
I think he's out in the hallway talking to residents, so we'll just get him back in here. Thank you, Jim.
So I'm sorry, Jim. I was just, we were just talking about the 2024 fee schedule and you sort of headed up that, that effort, you know, in terms of coordinating the various departments. So I didn't know if you had anything else that you wanted to share in terms of just general approach as it relates to the fee schedule.
Yeah, our general approach is every year, we try to look at our fees to make sure that they're commensurate with the level of service for the service that's provided for each and every type of fee. We take a look at when we last updated the fees. A number of the building permit fees we had updated in 2019. It's now four years or five years really down the line. Inflation has gone up about 20% and a lot of our fees you'll see are adjusted accordingly. And basically, we kind of look at what the fees are first and then go back to see how does it match with what inflation was? And it actually tracks really well with that. A number of other fees are tied into indices that we must follow. The Park and Recreation Fee in Louisville is tied to a certain index, I think it's the Engineering News Record, 20-city Cost Index. The Traffic Impact Fee is tied to the Philadelphia Area CPI, or it's FISA. Or it's vice versa, I forget which one's which. Uh, there you go. Um, and um, so we we adjust our fees accordingly every year with that and make sure that uh, all the fees we have adequately would cover the costs borne by uh, us for the services provided.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the approval of Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two, adopting the twenty twenty-four fee schedule.
Second?
Motion made by John and seconded by Colin. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Yes, sir, if you'd like to make public comment, please come up to the mic. State your full name and whether or not you're a resident of the township, but I think you're here for the next part.
Oh, is it, yeah, about the uh, the fees for the uh, for the community center. Is that the next part?
No, no, that's actually the side. That is the side, yeah. The the other, the other one is.
My apologies.
That's the next part?
Stay where you are. Bring on your, bring on your comments.
Okay, uh, my name is David Burkhart. I live at three one six Walton Drive. Uh, at the uh, November meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, they voted to uh, increase uh, the fees, the user fees paid by Laura Makefield seniors from fifteen to thirty dollars for residents and from twenty to sixty dollars for non-t township residents. Uh, Mr. Terry informed us about this proposed fee increase on Wednesday, December sixth. And as such, we had no opportunity to address the board uh, prior to their vote on the recommendation for the increased fees. So we are requesting at this time that you consider our position before voting on the proposed increase in our user fees. And we currently charge our members twenty-five dollars per person, which is in line with dues charged members by other senior groups in the area. This revenue approximately covers our annual expenses related to uh, program and operational expenses for which we receive no funding from the township, the county, or the state. And with this additional, uh, with the addition of this individual user fee, uh, which other, by the way, other senior groups do not pay to the municipalities in which they uh, meet. Uh, we're now incurring an annual operating deficit which is gradually eroding our limited reserve funds. This year, our deficit is projected to be five thousand seven hundred dollars. Our Board of Directors is currently considering increasing our membership dues to cover this shortfall, which will be approximately an increase of sixty percent of our current dues. This uh, proposed fee increase will take our fee paid to the township from five thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars to an estimated thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Now, we realize that from your perspective as supervisors, this is a relatively insignificant sum as you're managing budgets in millions of dollars. But to us, to our group, this increase is going to place an unsustainable financial burden uh, on our group. And if this continues, we will no longer be viable within a few years without a significant additional increase in our membership dues. Right now, to to balance our budget, we calculate we will have to increase our membership dues on average to to seventy dollars per person, which is approximately three times more than other uh, senior groups in this area are currently paying. Now, we've done an initial limited polling of our members, and that polling suggests that our membership will decrease approximately twenty-five percent in two thousand fourteen due to this increase. If this, if this is, if the fees to the township are increased to thirty and sixty dollars. And one acti, one of our activity chairpersons has already indicated that their group will no longer meet in the community center because of this increase. Now, when you consider the amount of money that this is going to increase with our reduction in membership, the uh, revenue generated by the seniors for the township will not be nowhere near thirteen thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. We estimate that with this reduction in membership, it will probably be somewhat south of ten thousand dollars. In addition to this reduction in the income, this increase, this proposed increased fee is going to effectively erode one of the main purposes for the construction of the community center, which was supported by this board, which was to provide a place for seniors to hold meetings and activities. And we realize the costs are increasing, but we would request that if there has to be an increase, that incre, that this increase should be more in line with the proposed increase for other user groups that are currently using the community center, which ranges about twenty to thirty percent based upon uh, the information that we have been provided. So that would place our increase uh, approximately to twenty dollars for residents and thirty dollars for non-residents. So that is what we are asking.
Thank you. Do you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, I have just a couple of quick questions. Um, I I don't know if you would know, Monica, would, do you know what the number of non-resident um, users within this group would be? Percentage?
Sorry, say again?
What what the number of non-resident users within that?
For our current uh, twenty twenty-three year, we have uh, where did it go? Two hundred and twenty-three residents and a hundred and twenty uh, non-residents that are that are currently members of our group.
And quick math that I'm gonna ask Dave to do. Um, and based on the proposed thirty percent increase in line with the other user fees, um, what exactly would that put us at? You you're saying, you're saying with the proposed.
Monica, you want to come up?
With the proposed or with the requested uh, increase of thirty percent, which you would say would be twenty and thirty dollars, twenty for resident, thirty for non-resident. Um, did you, did you poll your your uh, your your users to see how mu, how many people would still be?
That's, that's what we estimate. Again, it was basically, uh, we haven't had time to uh, poll the entire membership. But the, from the percent, from the group that we have talked, the people that we have talked to, uh, our current estimate, and again, this is something that we will not know until we have to then uh, indicate to our members what our, what our new fee is going to be, that uh, we expect it would be a twenty-five percent reduction in total me, total membership. And it could very well be that more of those uh, more, a bigger percentage of that reduction will be from non-re, non-t township residents because of the significant increase in that fee.
And that would be based on the, on the thirty sixty, but based on a twenty thirty, what type of?
Yeah, we're, at this point, if 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 the increase is to to twenty thirty, uh, again, we feel that we can at this point uh, uh, absorb that for at least the time being, but it's going to be very difficult if if the fees are increased to thirty and sixty without, again, taking our membership fee. And again, if you wanted to break it down from uh, residents and non-residents, we would have to raise our membership fee to uh, sixty dollars for township residents to cover our other expenses in addition to the user fee we're paying to the township and ninety dollars for non-residents. So that would, that that's, that's a break even point for us with our budget. You know, we're not, you know, we don't have a, you know, a a lot of excess money to deal with, so that's, that's what we're dealing with, and many of the folks that I've talked to said that if that was going to be the fee, they will go to one of the other centers where they can uh, uh, get some of the same services that are, that our group is providing them.
So just, just to um, maybe help in some of the discussion, just I I know um, Monica, the, the, fir- first of all, the fees are, that we're talking about are annual fees. They're not, they're not monthly fees, correct? It's a, it's an annual cost, right?
Yep, it's annual.
So we're talking thirty, thirty dollars annually and 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 sixty dollars annually.
Yes.
Um, can you maybe just share sort of what is provided, um, you know, from an access standpoint, from a service standpoint? Just again, to make sure that the board and and other members of the audience are aware of what getting in exchange for thirty dollars annually or sixty dollars annually under the proposed fee schedule?
Um, well, but staffing, we set and tear up, set up, tear down every single one of their programs. Um, they use the facility about, you know, we did some math, arguably, whether, whether, you know, you agree with my math or not. Um, fifty-nine percent of the time is used of uh, the, by the senior user group. Um, in comparison by hours, hour to hour, to all the other programs that we have in there. Um, we also provide, you know, their tables, extra chairs, um, which are replaced regularly every single year, all the toilet paper, paper towels, all the paper products, um, along with support from our support front desk staff. Um, so those are just a few of the things. They also have a full classroom that's all to them that they, we don't use at all. So that's also part of the user fee.
There's also printing involved, I guess?
Oh, and and printing the bi, bi-monthly newsletter. Um, so that's four hundred and twenty copies of a six to ten-page newsletter every other month.
And then just for purposes of information, the distinction between this facility, for example, and the facility in Falls, what you want to just explain to the board, that that Falls facility is county-supported in some fashion, and there's some restriction, right?
County and state funded, so they're county and state funded. Um, it's all based on socioeconomic status. So the lower socioeconomic status, they get more funding from county and state. Um, the higher incomes get a little less funding. Um, because it's supported in that way, they're able to offer reduced costs. I know North Hampton in particular, they provide a little bit more funding from the township. They plan on increasing their fees. Unfortunately, I couldn't get their fees um, before, before this meeting, so they're also intending to increase their fees in the new year, too. But we're strictly township-funded.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, well, when we looked at our uh, hours used, first of all, the uh, it is a concurrent use of the facility. The uh, Parks and Rec Department is in the building uh, all day long, every day, and so that those uh, they are already using this building. Our use is, we use the building approximately twenty hours a week. So that the uh, the number of hours per year, and it would be approximately a thousand hours per year that our group is in the building. Uh, you know, you can deduct for holidays and such like that. By contrast, the uh, Parks and Rec Department personnel are in the building from May thirty, or from eight o'clock to four thirty every day, fifty-two weeks a year. So if you want to start to apportion the use of operating expenses, I think there needs to be a little bit better adjustment of the amount of time or the amount of use that the various groups use uh, use the building. In addition, since this building is already being used by the township, the heat, the heat is on.
Parks and Rec's department lives, that's right.
The heat is on, the lights are on, the uh, uh, air conditioning is running, the grass has to be cut. Those are all expenses that are going to be incurred whether or not the seniors group is in the building. So that to uh, to allude that uh, we should be paying for fifty-eight percent of the operational expenses of this building is not a fair uh, assessment of the total cost of the building.
But with the math that it didn't, um, it was fifty-eight percent of seventy-five percent of the usage, because we deducted um, for the use. I just want you to, I I don't, it's not, I don't even know if this, this document's in front of you. We did an Excel spreadsheet.
No, and I, I think, I think we're kind of losing track of
Yeah.
different things, because I don't think, if I heard your math correctly, the po, the position is that it only costs thirty thousand dollars a year to operate that building, which, anyway, sir, as you may know, we had over a million dollar deficit this year.
I understand that.
And as you may know, we have not raised user fees for anybody in at least, at least since I've been on the board, which is twenty eighteen. And as you know, as we all know, prices for everything is just going up. So unfortunately, we have had to make some very difficult decisions, not only here with you and and your friends who are here with you, but across the board for every group. Some groups are um, claiming they're more impacted because it's not an annual fee. They can end up paying fees two or three times, depending on how active they are, and they're just running around on grass. So i- it, it is, you know, not a great
Yeah, when, uh, when we look at the increase in fees, uh, from the information Mr. Terry provided us, our, our fee is increasing one hundred and forty-two percent. The paid programming fees, thirty percent, rentals, twenty-three percent. What we are asking is that there should be parity in this increase in fees, so that our fee should be approximately the same increase percentage-wise as other groups are paying.
If I could ask a question?
All right, go ahead, John. Yeah.
Um, what are the fees for some of the other user groups? So like, uh, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm uh, I'm out of market on that, but if I, if a kid wanted to play like YMS or LMFA or PAA, what are they paying for a season for that?
From the, to pay the league?
Well, how much of the, the, there's, it's how much is a kid paying to the township for that? So they have fees, which are X.
Right.
And some portion of X is given to the township per, per player, right?
So the board is recommending theirs wa, um, was fifteen and thirty-six. The board is, Park Board is recommending to raise that to thirty and sixty also, but they pay it twice a year.
Okay, so it's essentially the same with other user groups who are experiencing the same fee increase. And, and to the sa, to ext, or even more, if they have to buy, if they're going to be using it twice in a year. You know, obviously, I understand that the increase you're speaking of seems high, but it's off a very low base, we're talking fifteen dollars. That's less than a streaming membership, you know, I mean Netflix is.
That's, that's not a, I don't, I don't believe that's an apples to apples comparison. Because I think what you need to look at is, you know, I mean, you can talk about the uh, youth, youth groups and and in baseball in the fields. You can talk about the pool and those increases. I think what you should be focused on is what are the increases that are being asked for, for use of the community center? And those are the numbers that I'm talking about here. Uh, the paid programming, the rentals, and the seniors are the groups that are paying right now to use the sen, to use the community center. And we're asking that that fee be in line, our fee, percentage-wise, be in line with the fees that are being recommended as increases for those other groups.
April, I'm sorry, um, not April, my brain is going crazy. Monica, thank you.
April is back, we could ask April.
No, 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 yeah.
Name change.
So I, there's a lot of talk about where we can make a fair comparison and where we can't make a fair comparison, but if we make the fair comparison to other groups that do use the community center, do any of those other groups have exclusive use of a piece of real estate within the building?
Aside from our office?
Correct. It's, I think we can, we can twist this as many ways as we want to, trying to find fair comparisons. I mean, it just, and I, and I, and I had this discussion with you, and I thank you for coming tonight. I thank you for coming uh, to the Parks and Rec Board Meeting. You know, it's, we're in a mathematical reality, as as the chair said. It's a one point five million dollar deficit, and everybody in the township needs to feel a little bit of that to help get out of that situation, right? Um, it's just where we are, and, you know, as some folks in the Parks and Rec Board pointed out, you know, yes, we're comparing a field to a building, but we're doubling their fees as well, and they incur those fees twice a year per child. So we're quadrupling the the cost to those, to those people. So anyways, I, again, I'm I'm really sensitive to the topic, and and I do thank you for coming out.
The other, the other thing to consider is that with our group, uh, a number of these folks are on fixed income. So that this, this ends up being uh, even more of a burden to seniors on fixed income than it would be for families that have a little bit more disposable income. Because this uh, this increase is going to dramatically in, uh, impact the fixed income that's available, or the disposable income that's available to the seniors. Because they don't have that opportunity uh, for the increase, and they're already going to be looking at the increase which is being proposed for the township taxes. So this is in addition to that increase that they're going to be paying.
Uh, just as a unit of comparison, do you know what falls for the same program charges?
We actually just found the North Hampton, Jim.
Oh, thank you, yeah, so the.
So they, they're supported by a three hundred and thirty-five thousand allocation for township. They have three full-time staff. Um, they use revenue from bus trip, facility rentals, social events, and dues. The center also par, partners with fifty local businesses to support its operations. Membership is twenty-five dollars per year and includes a monthly newsletter and participation and members-only event. Membership is twenty-five dollars per year and includes a monthly newsletter and participation and members-only events. So...
But as we stated before, we get no support from the township or from businesses or from other organizations for our costs. So we're, we're solely responsible for those costs. And when you look at, again, some of the other locations where seniors groups meet, in Middletown Township, for example, they meet at the Middletown Township Community Center. The senior group in Middletown pays one dollar a year to the township for the use of the building.
So do you know what Falls pays by any...
No, I don't. I haven't, I haven't had an opportunity to research all that. I don't believe, Morrisville also meets in the municipal annex building. And I don't believe they are paying anything to the borough or their group to meet in that building.
I, I think that, you know, the, the optic of when you pull the curtain back and you actually look to see what our finances are, I, I find it humorous that, you know, Falls Township is looked at as a, as a economic, a socially-economic, less than, than Lower Makefield. They are heads and shoulders above us from a financial standpoint, from a municipal government standpoint. So they have those excess funds. As you know, we're, we're running at a deficit. So we have to come up with some kind of creative ideas to, to try to, you know, to, to make it work. They also have an EIT, and they were also collecting a lot of money from Waste Management, right? So...
Less, less and less as time goes on, but that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother show. Again, what we are requesting is that if, you know, we recognize that there's a, there's a budget deficit and if there needs to be an increase, place it on parity with the other groups that are using the community center.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yep.
Eric Suber, fourteen forty-two Woodby Road. I am also a member of the Lower Makefield seniors. If you double somebody's fee and they pay it once a year, it's doubled. If you double somebody's fee and they pay it twice a year, it's still doubled. It's not quadrupled. They pay it ten times a year and you double it, it's still doubled. It's not twenty times more. Okay? That's basic math. Just wanted to point that out for those people who thought that some people were getting their fees quadrupled. And I agree with Dave that making our increase in line with the other groups that use the community center would be more equitable. And I also agree that the amount that's going to be collected from the Lower Makefield seniors is a drop in the bucket in the overall township budget. And it's also frankly a, a drop in the bucket for most of the, most of the members. But for some of the members, it's going to be a problem, and that's why we're going to lose some people if the fees are increased by two-hundred percent for non-residents in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up to the mic, please. Feel free to close down. Yep, no worries. And then your full name and whether or not you live in the township.
Merrill Borey, Chainer, one-twenty-one Paul Road. All I want to say to you people is that how you treat your seniors will reflect on you. One day, you will all be a senior. So take that into consideration. And as my friends have said, it's a drop in the bucket. It's not going to bring your budget in line. It may help a miniscule bit, but it's going to do more harm than it is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any public comment on the line?
There's no public comment online.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just thinking, is there an opportunity for us to maybe adjust this to, to...
I was thinking that's something unfortunately that we may have to look at as the year goes on.
Okay.
Right? We've, we've had other, you know, I'm, I appreciate that fifteen dollars to thirty dollars is doubling. And that's, you know, for people on a fixed income, anything can hurt. But it is for a year. And we have had to, like, when we look at the pool and we look at all the changes Monica has been making to try to make sure that those fees, you know, work for the majority of people in the, the most fair and equitable way possible. So I, I think that, you know, where I, I sit, you know, fifteen thousand going to balance our deficit? It's not. But we have a giant deficit and we've waited too long to adjust fees. So I feel sad but comfortable where we are, but got nothing else to add.
Yeah, I, I think my point was maybe, you know, adjusting it not as significantly for residents versus non-residents. I, I think the, the asset of the community center is Lower Makefield's asset. And I think for residents to take advantage of that is what the meaning of it is. So adjusting the, the, the rate for the residents, maybe ten dollars, and for non-residents, you know, maybe making it twenty-five, fifty or something. But I, I think that it's something that, you know, again, we can maybe look at during the year and see kind of where it goes. But I think the importance is it's a resident asset, just like all the other assets of Lower Makefield Township. Unfortunately, we can't, again, the optic is Lower Makefield Township is cash-rich, but we're just not. You know, and that's just the optic of, of what's going on in neighboring municipalities, and that's unfortunately not the story. So as we pull that curtain back, I, I hope people understand that that's really what the case is, and that's what we're trying to deal with.
James, on the, on the matter of resident versus non-resident, and I, I think this is something that the senior group would agree with. The, part of the point of the senior group is a social club. There are folks who have lived in Lower Makefield and have moved away, who've moved into some of the fixed income, you know, you know, retirement-type communities around the county. So, you know, their fees, their membership contributes just as strongly to the township as those who are resident. So, you know, I, I, I would like to say that, I, I'm not sure that fixing one side of the coin and not the other does much for their, their membership on the whole.
And just to follow up with the DCNR guidelines for resident versus non-resident, so if we want to go for any kind of funding, we have to keep it, you know, it has to be double is the max we can do for a non-resident versus a resident. So if there was...
And it does fall under, it does fall under DCNR, right?
Well, not necessarily right now, but say we wanted to go for a grant that is applicable, where they're going to be using the facilities, say, expansion of the facility, some kind of addition or anything like that, we really should be considering those DCNR rules.
Has to be double or can't be more than double?
It just can't be more than double.
Okay.
Monica, let's bring up a good point about grants. If we ever, as a township, you know, you mentioned a couple of townships that have state funding or county funding or something else. You know, this is all-in, it's probably under twenty thousand dollars generated, right, by fees?
Yeah.
Fifteen? I mean, we're, we're, it'll, okay. So we're, I mean, other things, I don't know what grant opportunities there are, but this seems like an opportunity for us to advocate for some outside funding, whether it's through grants from some public entity or some Lower Makefield businesses, sponsorship, all that, all that stuff.
So I did look into that. As far as for a senior center, it'd be very difficult for us to get funding as a senior center for senior funding, both county and state, just in the fact that we have Falls Township. Senior centers such close proximity, Morrisville, close proximity, and a lot of that has to do with what school district you are in, too. So they use the school district as a parameter in most cases. So that, that would be a little bit difficult. What some of our leagues do to help offset their costs is they go and seek sponsorship from the community. That might be something that the senior group could, could do.
Yeah. Is there funding, sticking, sticking with the, the grant approach? Because, I mean, we know how to write grants, right? We might be able to help. There's funding for senior centers, but there's probably, I don't know this, but there's probably funding for senior activities or senior-adjacent stuff that we might be able to use to... I, I know there's an additional fee that, that is charged by the seniors to the members on top of the membership fee that goes to funding other things that they do, whatever those things may be. Is there a way, are, are you aware of any grants or other funding sources that we could use to help with that?
Not off the top of my head, no. Generally, the senior sender funding is for those...
The building?
Yeah.
And would you be willing to look into that and research it? I mean, you know, I, I think this cost, the thirteen-thousand-dollar cost, I think it does reflect a relatively true cost of, of using the space. I do think the right way to fix this is to try and help find other ways to do that. These other centers that are only charging fifteen or twenty or twenty-five dollars, they have a lot more funding sources than we do, right? So it's a bit of a false dichotomy. So, you know, is there something that we can do as a township to help research grants, to help maybe provide some grant writing services to help the senior group bring funds in to defer these costs?
I mean, we certainly look into that.
One idea along those lines, my sister-in-law is in Prince William County, Virginia, and they have a bus program with trips that helps fund... Yeah. So we've got that same function. Does the bus fees cover any of the senior fees or is that...
I don't think they make any money on the bus trips. I think it's all break-even. Yeah.
Yeah, our, our group sponsors bus trips throughout the year. But as, basically, it's a, that's a self-funded operation. So it's basically a net-zero function for our group. So that, you know, we, we, we work with a tour group, we figure out what the charge is going to be, and that's what we charge our members. So there's no, again, that has nothing to do with the...
Right. How many of those do you run a year and roughly how many participants?
Five or six trips a year.
So you're talking about two-hundred-and-fifty trips per year of people, if it's fifty per trip?
It's, the, the minimum, the minimum is forty. We have to have forty for the trip. That's, that's what, yeah, forty, that's what it's been contracted with the tour group.
Okay. Yeah. There's not much to...
Can you speak a little closer to...
Oh, I, I apologize. Yeah, I was just suggesting that if you marked up those trips a little bit, that that would cover some of the fee and could help provide additional...
The, the trips are, the, the trips are already costing in excess of a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per person for the trip. Because it's, it's the bus three, it's the program that's going to be there, it's the meals, et cetera, et cetera. And that gets, that gets to the point where, again, it's, it gets to be a little bit pricey for some of the members that will, you know, they don't participate because of the cost of the trip. It's a, it's a pretty expensive item, but it's a pass-through. There's no, you know, we don't make any additional money. We're very limited, maybe just a few dollars, but not, not anything significant that could go to paying our, our fees.
Yeah. Or the tour operator could give you some money back, too.
I, I guess you could always ask, but as you, as you, as you hear from the group out here, they're kind of laughing at that, at that as an option. But yeah, never hurts to ask. They can just say no, but that's, that's basically what we do. I think the fees and the, Ellie and Margaret could speak a little bit more to that as far as what the cost is. But it varies by, by trip. But it's generally between a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars per, per trip, and that's a day trip.
Sir, someone had come up to the mic, but then he sat down. So would you like... Okay, all right. Any other comments? Any other public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
It was a nay.
You were a nay?
Yes.
Sorry. Motion passes four-one. James is a nay. Okay, we're on to C. Consider approval of Resolution twenty-three thirty-three establishing the twenty-twenty-four Parks and Rec Fee and Lue.
Yeah, so as Jim said, this is, this is actually established by ordinance relative to the park and rec fee and lieu of that is paid for by, or paid by developers. Again, as noted, there's a specific index in which the fee is, is increased by, again, is reflected in, in paragraph one or section one of the resolution. That is the Consumer Price Index for the Philadelphia area, which went up three and a half percent from the October of twenty-twenty-one to October of twenty-twenty-two. So based on that indices, the fees are being adjusted consistent with the ordinance.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by James. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Thank you.
Yeah. So just one, one point of clarification. I, I think that should reflect October twenty-twenty-two to October of twenty-twenty-three. But I'll, I'll confirm that in the resolution. I just want to make a note that, that I, I don't believe that was updated.
It would only be, it's the three and a half percent. Did you, is it the previous year?
Right. And you, but you gave, you gave, you gave her this, these numbers as well as the percent of increase? Or you just gave her the number? Okay. Right. So I, he's saying that he believes it's, it's just a typo in terms of the time period.
So the years mentioned in the resolution...
Should reflect October twenty-second, or twenty-twenty-two to October twenty-twenty-three. The actual dollar amounts are, are correct. I just want to make a note that the dates that are noted in terms of the, the period of adjustment should be October of twenty-twenty-two to October of twenty-twenty-three.
CPI between October twenty-two and twenty-three is three and a half percent.
For the Philadelphia area, that is correct, yes. So the next item is Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-four. Again, this relates to the off-site roadway improvement fee that's paid pursuant to Act two-oh-nine. Again, as Jim earlier noted, this is adjusted according to the Engineers News Record Cost Index for construction cost in the ordinance, or I'm sorry, in the Philadelphia area. Again, this is being adjusted consistent with the, the ordinance that established the original fee.
Your motion?
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by James. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
And then the final item that I have in terms of action item is Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-five. Resolution of the Board of Supervisors establishing the contribution rate required from any non-uniformed employee in order to fund the non-uniform pension fund requirements for twenty-twenty-four. Again, the contribution is set at three percent of salary towards the funding requirements for that pension. This is also consistent with the collective bargaining agreement between the unionized non-uniform members of, of this plan. So we would recommend approval and establishment of that contribution at three percent.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-five providing for the non-uniformed defined benefit employee contribution in the pension fund for twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by James. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. And I just have some general updates just for the information of the board and the public. As Dan had mentioned earlier, we did receive a notice actually yesterday concerning the receipt of a, a small water and sewer grant for what was previously referred to as Maple Vale Phase Two, now being called the Highland Drive Stormwater Improvement Project. Again, that, that amount of received funding was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four sixty-two. Like to just personally thank both the Senator's Office as well as Representatives Warren's Office for their support for, for that application. The next sort of informational item is... The next sort of informational item is, as the board is aware, the township issued RFP to update the stormwater ordinance. We received two proposals. Those proposals were due this, this past Monday, December the eighteenth. Those proposals have been distributed to the, to the board, to the members of the Board of Supervisors. I would recommend that we schedule interviews with the two respondents to make sure that there's an understanding of, of the scope of work, recognizing that there was some parity or some, some discrepancy from a, from a pricing standpoint. So I'll follow up with an email to try to get together a, a potential date to, to do that, if, if that's okay with the board.
Do those interviews need to be public or is that, how, how do we do that?
They, they wouldn't need to, need to be public.
Wouldn't have to wait for a meeting?
No. What's that?
No.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, you would take action at a public meeting to award, but the, the interview itself would not have to be done in public. And then just two additional informational items. I did release a, a RFP, again, consistent with the discussions that occurred as, as part of the twenty-twenty-four budget process for Strategic Management Planning Program Services under DCD's program. Those responses are due on the twelfth of, of January. And then finally, also consistent with some of the discussion as part of the budget process, the township is also in the process of, of recruiting and advertising for a Director of Finance, and applications are, are due on January the nineteenth. So more to come on both of those items.
Thank you. Go ahead, yes, John.
If I could, would it be appropriate at this time, Mr. Solicitor, if I were to bring up the question of a potential agreement with an accounting firm to provide supplemental accounting services? So I am forgetting the name of the firm.
Zelinski, yeah, yeah. Axelrod, yeah.
Right, so what I'm going to do now is make a motion that is our intent to place on the agenda at the next public meeting an approval of.
Zelenkovsky and Axelrod.
Zelenkovsky, Zelen, and Axelrod to provide supplemental accounting services. So I think the motion is only to place on the agenda for the next public meeting.
Well, I think first you have to amend this agenda.
Yeah, well, I have.
I think to say that.
Yeah, you have to amend it just to say that you're intending to do it, that, that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Not actually just so the public is aware, if, if this motion passes to amend the, the agenda, there's no vote taken to expense funds tonight, is to notify everybody that's the intent at the next public meeting.
Do we just want to talk about it under new business? We just want to talk about it under new business? Other business? I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do whatever, but if.
Yeah, I just kind of thought, was it part of the manager's report or new business? I'm either way, I mean, so all we would be doing is saying it would be on the future agenda at the next public meeting.
And actually, if you wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah.
You could probably just say that at, at the end of the, under other business, you could say that's the, the consensus of the board is to do that only.
Oh, there's not even a motion.
It's really, it's, it's a notification process.
And, and that would empower the township manager to indicate that we're approving up to twenty thousand dollars for, for supplemental accounting services.
May I just ask a question? So, Mr. True Love, the law permits me, permits us to add something to the agenda that is an emergency situation. We are past our statutory obligation to complete our audit, and this particular firm does have a tight window to begin this effort. Would that meet the bar to place it onto this agenda?
That, that hasn't been defined under the under any case law, so we, we could, we could take a whack at it. No reason why we couldn't, so I, I would say.
Or we could just do, right?
Yeah.
We, we don't need to, we're telling everyone what our intention is, and then it will be appropriately agendized on the seventeenth.
Right.
January, and we will have details about what Z and A has been retained to do and what, where they are in that process.
Yeah. Zelenkovsky and Axelrod.
We'll talk about that under other business. So if you haven't heard enough, you'll hear more later.
Very long know that name, so that's why we, it's not like it rolls off my tongue because I just happened to read it for the first time. So it's my turn now, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, Solicitor's reporting. Two executive sessions to report on, there was one last Friday where all supervisors, myself, Mr. Kratzler, and John Bobber, my office attended, discussed litigation matters that concluded approximately one P M. Also, an executive session tonight started at six-thirty. Again, all supervisors were in attendance with Chief Kalusi, Mr. Kratzler, myself. Following items were discussed, litigation, information, informational, real estate, security, community fund, and personnel, and that executive session concluded just before this meeting started. Under my particular report, authorization to execute settlement agreement between Lower Makefield Township and the Morsville Municipal Authority, I would suggest also to add at the end, subject to Morsville Municipal Authority execution and approval, so that's in the record. They had to have the meeting tomorrow night. The background for this briefly for the public. As the public may know, before the system was, the sewer system was sold to Aqua in March of twenty-twenty-two, all the treatment of sewage that went, not all, much of it went from Lower Makefield through the Morsville Municipal Authority. There were several agreements starting in nineteen sixty-four that outlined the, the costs and the obligations to pay. That was to be done by submissions of invoices to the township by the, by MMA, which were infrequent and late at best many times. And the township wanted, basically wanted to clean up its record so that they could move forward. So in, in an effort to do so, the supervisors directed our firm to begin with called declaratory judgment action, just to bring the matter to the table. After several months, actually over a year or two of litigation and many discussions, and, and the hard work of Greg Hucklebridge, the former sewer director, who looked at the, the documents and was able to actually oversee a reconciliation. Recommendation is to pay two point four million dollars to the Morsville Municipal Authority, which would exonerate completely any further obligations from the township for any past payments and also for anything related to any construction of any, and let's see what the exact wording. Contemplated or uncontemplated future treatment or collection and transmission facilities, collection and processing of sanitary sewage after March twenty-twenty-two. So essentially, what we're doing is cleaning up those invoices. And just so everybody's aware, separate monies have been allocated. I'm going to use the term allocated. For this purpose, this, this recommendation is not going to increase your taxes or your, your sewer rates. This is something was set aside for that purpose. And we recommend that the township be authorized to execute the settlement agreement per the terms that just outlined. We do, we need a motion for that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize to execute settlement agreement between Lower Makefield Township and the Marsville Municipal Authority, subject to MMA board approval at their twelve-twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by Dan. Any discussion from the board?
I just had a follow-up question for the township manager out of the, how much money was actually allocated to be paid? Or how much did we have set aside actually as part of this settlement? I know we're paying two point four, so what did we actually budget for that settlement?
Yeah, this is, this is well under what was initially contemplated or set aside for that purpose, so, so well, well within what's, what's been set aside.
Okay, excellent, that was it.
Any other comments from the supervisors? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Two matters under zoning hearing board review, appeal number Z dash twenty-four dash two zero four two. Williams Zabluski for the property located twenty-one fifty-four West Wellington Road, tax parcel two zero dash zero zero four dash zero five seven. Applicant request of variance from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash sixty-nine point A fourteen, small A, in order to place an accessory building in the side yard setback at one point four feet. That's on one side and one foot on the other side, where ten feet is the minimum. And township zoning ordinance two hundred dash nineteen capital B, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing twenty-seven point eight percent to forty-two, forty, forty point two percent, or twenty-six percent is allowable amount in order to install in-ground concrete pool, pool decking. Given the rather extreme variance request in terms of the dimensions for the, and the side yard setback reduction, and also the, the impervious surface, we recommend that the township oppose the application at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to oppose appeal Z dash twenty-four dash two zero four two.
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Any conversation from the board?
I, I think it's, opposition to, to this particular appeal is important to send a message to the zoning hearing board. As we've been talking about a great deal this evening, obviously, impervious area leads to stormwater management issues, so it needs to be clear that this increase in impervious area over and above what is allowed is not something that this board is in favor of. I don't know if, secondary to that, we also look at, these are relatively smaller slots, and we're looking at setbacks for accessory buildings of approximately a foot from a, from the, from the lot edge. And I know that most people, you know, when you're looking at quarter acre size lots, myself included, when you have a, a structure about a foot from your property line, it's, it's very, very close. That's why we have zoning setback requirements that we do. So I think these two issues are, are significant enough that we would oppose.
I, I think you'd literally need an easement from the neighboring properties to do your own yard work with a one-foot setback.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. The second matter before you, appeal number Z dash twenty-four dash two zero four three. Ronak Patel for the property located five one eight Clarendon Court, tax parcel two zero dash zero six, six zero dash three oh five, requesting a variance from the township zoning ordinance two hundred dash sixty-nine point A fourteen, small C, in order to construct a fence in the storm sewer easement. As the zoning hearing board is familiar with many of these issues and, and taxes appropriate conditions, they're familiar with this situation. We would recommend deferral to the zoning hearing board unless the board feels otherwise. Hearing no comment on that, no vote is required, so deferral will be. And that's all I have for my report tonight, thank you.
We're just letting the zoning hearing board take it, yeah?
Okay, on to agenda item number twelve, community development. Thank you, Jim. Did your battery die? Hey.
There you go. That worked. Good evening again. You have the for you consideration of pay application number one for the twenty-twenty-three tree planting project to Park and Landscape and Hardscape LLC. And the amount of, and the agenda item's actually just slightly off. It's actually sixty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and forty-two cents. The original contract item was for sixty-five thousand dollars, I think, and five hundred and nine cents. There's a savings of two thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars in the project. We had some substitution of some trees, with trees that were already on the list. They're all native trees, and that was for the planting of a hundred and sixty-two trees at the Fred Allen Softball Complex, the Greg Coyola Baseball Complex, Complex and Memorial Park. We're holding back the amount of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents just to make sure that all the punch list items have been complete. I know EAC had pointed out some issues with the, the way they mulched around the trees. I believe those items have been addressed, but we have not verified that yet, and that's why we're holding back that amount for the punch list.
Could you please state the corrected amount one more time? Sixty-two what?
Sixty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve pay application number one for the twenty-twenty-three tree planting project to Parkland Landscape and Hardscape in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and forty-two cents.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by James. Any discussion from the board? Yes, Dan.
And this is part of the EAC's discussion this week at their recent meeting relative to the, the amount of soil or, or mulch that was placed at, for many of the trees. The EAC was, as, as you saw in the email chain, was displeased with the contractors' planting. They used the, in, in some instances, the common term would be volcano approach to putting mulch around trees, not, a little different than that, kind of cone around it. So the EAC was, was disappointed with that. Obviously, they've been coordinating with Mr. Marjuski and staff to go around and look to make sure that that has been mitigated. That being said, the amount we're holding back, I'm not sure, if it might, if it should be more, I'm thinking kind of out loud about that. Secondly, in terms of the, you know, this is, compared to some of the other tree plantings we've done with volunteers, is a big number, obviously, in terms of payment. The tree sizes in this case, that was the driver for, for the cost, right? So these are larger trees that required equipment and other things that volunteers wouldn't be able to do by hand, is that?
That is correct. They had to come out with a machine that had a large auger on it to drill a hole large enough to take the root ball, which is roughly about two feet by two feet by two feet roughly. So it's a more aggressive undertaking than just a bunch of volunteers with some shovels or our Public Works Department and Parks and Rec with the, the small auger doing, you know, one-inch trees or half-inch trees. And also, there is more trees. I think these are about the same number as we had planted in each of the two volunteer plantings at the Patterson Farm, so.
Root ball, that's, that's not something you just throw on your shoulder and.
Uh, no, you need machines and equipment to transport it and to dig the hole at the right depth, put it in.
What's the, what warranty do we have on the trees?
I believe it's an eighteen-month warranty on that.
Okay, so that means any, any damage, any, if trees die or diseased, they are replaced for their warranty?
That is correct.
Does that also include improper, if they, I don't know how we're able to prove it after eighteen, after a year or so, but improper planting methods or anything like that? For example, if we, EAC did not see, or other folks did not see the additional mulch or soil, the volcano approach, if it hadn't been noticed, how, how would we be able to prove that that would be a cause, potential cause for exercising the warranty?
Well, we hadn't done the final inspection yet for the project when Jim Bray had pointed that out, so. I appreciate him doing that, and also for the cookies that he brought in today, too. They were delicious.
Yes. Jim and Gene are great about this stuff. So anyway, so that, that's all, I, I just wanted people to understand why the, the price tag was higher than, than some of our other tree plantings, just because of the sheer size and number of the trees. But I do also want to make sure that the contractor does, does address the issues in a timely manner, given the time of year that we're at.
Well, he's already done the work. We just have to go out and verify it.
Okay, so you're just gonna?
Yeah, we want to make sure that he did all the trees and didn't miss three or four, ten or whatever.
And you can, I'll do it just for you, and you counted all the trees to make sure you planted them?
Pardon me? Okay.
Dan wants to make sure you counted all the.
He harasses Isaac to make sure that he's counted all the paving stones and measured everything, so.
He wanted me to ask you if.
I'm still working on the hypothetical. If they hadn't seen it, what would we have done to prove it? I'm still working on that one, but.
Well, no, no, if they hadn't seen it and the trees died.
But, but they did see it, so how would we try to figure out how we would prove what can't happen? Because we stopped it.
So there's a war, point being, there's a warranty, right? The tree, if, if, if the trees are damaged at any point because of improper installation, how do we prove that? That's, that's, that, that's the key. That's all.
Yeah, well, that's why we have a maintenance period on most construction type items.
Yeah, that's all. Bless you.
Bless you.
But I, so he's already done, he's already done the mitigation work. I'll call, as I'll refer to it. We, we just have to, you or whoever else has to go out and walk it, make sure it looks the way it's supposed to, and then we'll release the additional twelve hundred bucks or whatever it is.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
The next item is consider extension of time for the fifteen-eleven Leonardhurst Road minor subdivision until February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved?
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Oh, sorry, go ahead, James.
What we're doing here is just extending the time. And a lot of, if you don't do this, the developer gets assumed approval, which is why they ask for, we'll see a couple.
Thank you, John. Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
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 Five zero, the motion passes.
Next item is consider extension of time for the Torbert Farm subdivision until January thirty first, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
Motion, I'm not sure. I can't call it. Motion made by James, seconded by Dan. Right? No one's, no one's complaining. We'll say they got it right. Any comments from the supervisors? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. I do continue to have a head cold, so forgive me. I can't hear them. All right.
The next item is consider extension of time for Area Hospital until December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by James, John, seconded by James. Any comments from the board?
Very quick question for the solicitor. This is being extended for basically another year. Is there any limit, just for the public, because everyone's concerned about.
Nothing in the MPC provides a limit necessarily.
This could be extended forever. So, given the concern, the public interest in development in this area.
Sure. I understand.
It's come up before and people have gotten.
And there's, there's nothing new to report other than the extension of time. There hasn't been any, when was the last time we saw a plan for that? I know that they lost the zoning hearing board appeal, but when was the last time we saw a new plan? Two thousand and nine?
I believe so.
And it was Aria, now it's Jefferson. So Jefferson just bought Lehigh Valley Network.
They did have another proposal that they were pitching back in twenty thirteen or fourteen, and they never pursued that further.
Any public comment? Yep, come on up.
It's almost too late to have public comment. Lorraine Sauter, two twenty Meadow Drive. I don't understand all the development. So Area Hospital is obviously not doing anything active. What's happening at the farm? That's Tower Bridge, Torbert Farm. Are we building tons of houses up on the where that we're going to have like impervious area, gobs of it, and now water issues and all kinds of things? Like, what is happening on Torbert Farm? What's happening in Lyndon Hurst Development? I don't even know those things. And are we approving all kinds of stuff because?
Nothing's been approved yet. They have applications before. And just just to kind of mention that, I know there've been a lot of comments on social media about stopping development. The township can't stop development. They can regulate it, which we are, and this, again, this board has done a good job of that. And they, I mean, they're working on now with new stormwater management rules and things like that. State law doesn't help this township in that regard, or any other township that's in that predicament. They're doing the best we can to regulate their applications for Torbert Farm. Bless you. There was a small, it's a small, it's a subdivision on fifteen eleven Lyndon Hurst, Jim?
It's a subdivision into two lots to create one new house.
So that's a small one. Torbert is a much larger development. It's still, there's still a lot of back and forth between the applicants and the township officials. So there's, nothing's been approved. I want to make sure you understand that.
But that farm has been, that farm has been sold. And you can't limit the number of homes that gets put.
Well, you, there are ways to regulate that, yes. And that's one of the things that's that's being discussed right now. So I just.
I mean, it would be lovely for all the fees that you would get, but the other fact is all the damage you get, you have to resolve.
Yeah, but so just, I mean, just to be perfectly clear, the way the builder, I'm not familiar with this builder, but the way they submitted their plan theoretically, they obeyed all the zoning rules and it's good to go theoretically. So no, we can't tell them they can build less houses because based on the size, they're allowed to build a certain amount of houses. And that's what they've submitted. Now.
And then we have no rights to say that the nineteen seventy three Water Act of whatever we're dealing with isn't good enough for the people at the bottom of the hill.
Correct.
That's bonus.
They said, not to go into too much, but they submitted a plan that is a by right plan per zoning. So number of lots and setbacks and all that.
Meaning they have, every time I hear that, I think we're buying liquor. It's not by right. It's they have, they have the right to do it that way.
BY, not BUY.
So.
But so then the second part of that process, though, is is the SALDO subdivision land development, the SALDO, S A L D O, that's our subdivision land development ordinance. So zoning just says you can have so many lots with setbacks and whatnot. It's kind of sets the basic framework, how many houses they could get. And then after that, the SALDO is where we apply our local ordinances, stormwater management, road, roads and infrastructure requirements.
Lights and sidewalks.
All, all that stuff. And that's where we get into the the detail of the design. Oftentimes, a developer may ask for waivers or other things, and we don't have to say yes to those. That, so the zoning, they basically, it seems like they've checked a lot of the boxes, even though, because we changed some zoning ordinances and SALDO ordinances right after that, right after they submitted. You know, the timing just was, is what it is.
I recall.
But the, and we're trying to work with them to try and work under that umbrella versus the old rules. So we'll see how that goes. But then the SALDO is where we get in nitty gritty design issues, where, yeah, we can dig in a little, a little bit, to the extent legal, and, and, you know, that we're allowed to. But we can really make sure that they follow the letter of the law when it comes to our SALDO issues. So we're going to be looking at that in great detail, and also trying to work with the developer to do something that more, maybe more palatable, given all the stuff that obviously you just brought up and we all know about. So.
I know it's too late to be doing this. It happens every week. We approve all these variances. And I'm just like, I don't get it. But okay.
In in many cases, so I want to speak to Torbert specifically because I do serve on the planning commission. You can see me there the second Monday of every month if you've really enjoyed your time with me moving forward.
No, I do, Colin.
Thank you so much. But it is frustrating to us on the planning commission when these plans come up, that we know they're not right for the township, for the character of the township, that the the residents don't want. But the law prevails, right? And the law says that whoever owns the land can redevelop in this way. So if you want action on that, if you want to change those things, it's got to come at the state level, right? You know, it frustrates us sitting up here on planning when the power that we have is just that they want a waiver to use a twelve inch pipe instead of a fourteen inch pipe. How much can we get out of them in exchange for those two inches? It's not much, but we do do the best that we can.
I was just curious. Thank you.
One, one last thing about this, because this gets into, sorry, policy issues. Different states have different rules about land development. Folks in California are are having a debate now about their laws of land use. And the concern is they're so restrictive, they can't build housing fast enough. And as a consequence, their housing prices are high. Different states, so there's a lot of concern about that there. We're on the other end of that in terms of rights that municipalities have to limit property holder rights. And that's a balance. And and as as Supervisor Coyle mentioned, it's important to speak with your elected officials at the state level to say, hey, is that balance right for our community or for our state? And and that's open, I think we all agree that we could probably tweak a lot of things in how that works to provide a good balance, to allow property owners and developers to be successful, but also protect the rights of lower Mayfield residents. Yeah.
More public comment? Hearing none, I'm going to call the question. And just for those who remember, this is agenda item twelve D. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Next item is approved resolution number twenty three dash thirty six. That is to adopt and submit to DEP the sewage facilities planning module for twelve seventy three Lyndon Hurst Road subdivision.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by John. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Next item we had touched on earlier in the meeting, that was approved resolution number twenty three dash thirty seven, designation of agent for submission of a flood mitigation assistance grant. And this is for the elevation of an existing home along River Road to be above the flood plain. And the grant would cover one hundred percent of the eligible cost for the elevation of the house.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by John. Any other comment from the board?
I'm curious with recent flooding on River Road, was this, was this particular parcel impacted?
No, no properties in Lower Mayfield were impacted by the flooding that I'm aware of. The flooding just basically got up on the roads in Yardley Borough, and that's about it.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And I believe the last item I have is approved resolution number twenty three dash thirty eight, designation of agent for submission of a building resilient infrastructure and communities grant, also known as the BRIC grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, I was going to give you that one. Motion made by John, seconded by Dan. Any comment from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to supervisor reports. I will just lead off that ad hoc did meet this last week. They are very anxious to move forward with the next phases and also to have direction from the board in two thousand and twenty four about either reconstituting the ad hoc or creating a new version of it. And then, of course, moving forward with the Patterson Farm project. So that's all I've got. John?
Yeah, two quick things. Historical Commission met, I guess, last week, at times blurring, review all the work for the previous year, including the State Hill Cemetery tour, which was a huge success and actually generated a lot of funds, as well as plans for additional grants throughout the year to help restore Slate Hill and other items that they're working on. Farmland Preservation met last night. However, the meeting was in the vault. It was their annual Christmas meeting. And Jim Majewski was there, Derek was there. And we had a chance to talk to some of the farmers who do farm the farmland preservation land, but no business was formally talked about.
Locally grown hops and.
Locally grown.
Well, I say shame, shame, gentlemen, because as you know, the country, our golf courses had a wonderful drink special, special celebrating the holidays. You chose to go to the borough when you could have been having a smorgasbord fashion or Bailey's martini.
Right. Well, Madam Chair, I, you know, I do, it's important for those to know that farmland is a separate five oh one C three and technically of the township. However, I I would agree a hundred percent on your suggestions that Mayfield Highlands is exactly where you want to have your Christmas party. And as as the chair ably stated, an Old Fashioned would be an excellent call. And you mentioned a Bailey's martini? Is that a special?
They do. They have three different holiday specials running right now, including like a coconut themed drink.
A coconut themed drink. Now, if you're listening to me and you're in the audience or or at home streaming, what better time to visit Mayfield Highlands when you're certain to get a great drink at a reasonable price?
Not tonight. He means tomorrow night because they will be having a happy hour featuring those festive drinks. Okay, James?
Oh, piggybacking on that, the golf committee did meet on Monday night at the golf course. And there were many Old Fashioneds drank. That was all I had for report. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I can't say we had any Old Fashioned at any of my meetings, but the Citizens Traffic Commission, we did, we did have a birthday cake. So happy birthday to the Chair of the Citizens Traffic Commission, Art Cohn.
Happy birthday.
Oh, wow. Art Cohn, yeah.
Say hi. We met on Monday. And the couple of residents who appeared before our board concerning speeds on Yardley Morrisville Road also appeared in front of the Citizens Traffic Commission. They made a couple of requests to the township regarding previous traffic studies. I believe that the response has already been given. And they would like the township to look into working with PennDOT to to install a permanent speed signal next to in that area just south of the borough.
Legit, yeah.
The EAC also met, and I think we probably, probably discussed most of the issues that the EAC considered. So that's the end of my report.
And now for the last supervisor report from Colin Coyle. Colin?
I'm gonna draw this one out and keep the mic. No, I do have some actual legitimate updates to make this week, so I apologize for everyone who the fun went first. The Historic Architecture Review Board met this past week and expressed some, some concerns around the planning commission gave preliminary and final approval to the point development. We were able to get a concession from the developer, right, obviously, to to do the previous pavement. We did that from the board. Harb raised valid concerns that we lack a mechanism to make sure that the developer adequately keeps its promises around redevelopment and restoration of the historical properties that are at the point. The report that similar promises had been made in the past in other developed areas of the township and that those obligations hadn't been met, that the commercial side of the property or residential side of the property had been completed, and that promised work had been abandoned. So they made the recommendation that in the future, the board consider language or mechanisms in those approvals to make sure that we have an enforcement mechanism to hold off certificate of occupancy or other finalization of work until we're satisfied that they've met those secondary obligations. And I thank the Historic Architecture Review Board for the very detailed discussion on a very important matter. The Planning Commission is the best commission, and I look forward to having that be my only job for the township. And our Parks and Recreation Board, again, amazing work on the budget. I know this was not easy issues to work through. I really thank them for their time, for the sincerity and the seriousness with which they they took these matters and the detail they went through. So that's it.
Thank you. And we are on to other business. So John, did you want to say something about Z and A County?
As I recall, Supervisor Lewis wanted to notify the the public that we were, the township is intending to engage Zelenkovsky and Axelrod. They will place it on the agenda for January seventeenth for amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the, and for the manager to be able to authorize to be engaged in that process. And it'll be voted on and or ratified on the seventeenth. Is that essentially the, okay?
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. And then, you know, in all seriousness, this is Colin's last meeting. And we really appreciate him having raised his hand. We had a lot of good candidates raise their hand, so it was a difficult choice to make. But I'll say that we've enjoyed our time with you and look forward to seeing you on Tuesday nights with planning.
Second Tuesday of every month. Thank you for your time up here. Thank you as well to the township staff, who was amazing in making sure that I was up to speed quickly and able to adequately understand the issues in front of the board and contribute. I wouldn't have been able to do this without every single member of township staff. I think I've met with everybody, including our wonderful police force. So thank you all.
Thank you. We don't have any appointments or reappointments tonight. Correct? Correct. Okay, so then we are on to public, public comment. Any public, public comment in the room? Any public comment on the line? Hearing none.
There's no public comment online.
Thank you. There being no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, however you celebrate, enjoy and be safe.